And you can participate via the Zoom call-in phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. And at this time, Tracy, will you please do roll call?
Yes, good morning. Supervisor Bone.
Hey.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Supervisor Bass.
Yes, here.
Supervisor Madron.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the flag salute. There we go. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So for those of you who would like to participate in today's board meeting, just a reminder that when you want to make a comment on an item, call in early. Raise your hand by pressing star nine at the beginning of the item. When your number is called, press star six to unmute yourself, and you will be given generally three minutes to speak. When you have thirty seconds left, you will hear the sound. And that means you have two, well, thirty seconds left to finish your comments. And then you will be muted. And thank you for your, thank you for your comment. Don't take it personally. If you haven't finished speaking, we just want to make it consistent for everyone. So now I'd like to go to our county administrative officer, Hayes, see if there's any modifications to the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Item D fourteen has been pulled from the agenda for discussion.
Thank you. Is there a motion from the board to move to approve the consent calendar minus item D fourteen?
Still moved.
Second. Right. So we'll go to public comment. At this time. Do you have one hand up? So seven, four, five, four. Welcome. And it's your turn.
Virginia, can you hear me?
Yes, Kent, welcome.
Good morning. Kent Swatki back in country and locked and loaded for bear. I did wish to make a comment. I watched the meeting when I got back. One of the first things I saw on TV coming back here was your meeting and you're, you have a action summary. And which is item four, I wish to make comment on that. I add my own action summaries to these things a little bit, and I embellish quite a bit more than you do. The details on your action summary are frequently quite marginal. Uh, the topic I was to speak on was the one related to the action summary with your auditor controller taking over your payroll. So glad to see that happen. If I were to add a little notes to that, I would say that extremely intelligent, sharp Karen Paws basically schooled Rex Bowen again. And the bullshit he keeps flinging at her is getting really old, Rex. So that's my only, only comment on this. Other than that, we do have, I think, only twenty consent items, and they're minimal. And I guess we can speak on fourteen later. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on your consent calendar and your action summary. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And there are no other hands up, so we'll go back to the board. Any supervisors have comments or questions, anything they want to say on the consent calendar? Or ready to vote? All right, Tracy? Can you please have a vote?
Yes. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Hi.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Passes by zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And again, these are for items not on the agenda. And we do have one hand raised, and we'll go to that person right now. That is seven, four, five, four.
Uh, Virginia, again, voice check. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, and welcome. They, I'm great to be back here. Great to have an opportunity to speak. I, I have a real angst and a real anxieties for faux environmentalists and some people who really causing major problems with the environment, and yet they act like they're helping the environment. So I'm naming names, and there's going to be names named. Uh, Epic, Mike Wilson, Noah Levy. Uh, we've got, uh, Natalie the Laugh, all these people who are faux environmentalists who've done nothing but decimate our, our environment by permitting, uh, the water takings, everything out there where it doesn't belong. And everybody else who's, Rex isn't a faux environmentalist, doesn't claim to be it, but he's responsible for a lot of these things. And it makes me so happy to see, uh, let's add Mike McGuire to that list. Mike and Mike, we got Mike and Mike there. Um, so happy to, for me to see finally the bottom falling out of this. And, uh, and I, I was told today by someone that, uh, the consequences in neighborhoods are not small with what's happened. The stress that's put in person, unfortunately, I was told today that an unborn baby was not born because of the stress of certain people putting pressure on people regarding this business, threatening people with physical violence. And these are people who are in your permitted process. These are, in fact, I think I could probably name a name here that Rex would find familiar. This is going to stop now. The karma is going to stop. Uh, the bottom is falling out of it. Those who have spent their money, uh, what I call stump money to procure properties may find their neighbors are pissed enough to go ahead and deal with the Rico crime situation. I don't have to do any of this. I just sit back and watch. Uh, for those who are pissed and you do know about people who've caused you problems in your neighborhood and have done it all with cash, there, there is an exit strategy. It's called a federal prison forfeiture of funds. It's called Rico. Um, Mr. McGuire, uh, it's been alleged to me as public perception that you involved in blocking a certain project through, uh, uh, up in Maple Creek called the Adessa Project. And either it was you or it was our governor who was involved in this, who also I have a whole bunch of interesting things brought to me in the near past here regarding this topic. Your karma is bad, and I just have to sit back and watch karma kick people in the ass. So there's going to be interesting, interesting times. Good times for Humboldt State, polytechnics happening up there, good times and other things. But to see this whole problem go away and implode on itself makes Mother Nature very happy. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on non-adjournedized items.
Thank you. Our next speaker has the last four digits of four, seven, five, six. And if that's you, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. Uh, this is Caroline Griffith. Um, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome Caroline.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I am the co-director of the North Coast Environmental Center. So I'm also calling in to talk about an environmental issue, just like Kent. Um, I'm just calling in today to share some facts about coal with the board since it's come to light that there are interests in town trying to woo you into supporting a far-fetched idea to ship coal through our county and export it out of Humboldt Bay. And I know that these industry people can be very seductive with all of their promises of economic prosperity and jobs. And I really just want to make sure that you're all really well-educated about what's at stake so that they do not lead you astray. Uh, it's really easy to get caught up in the excitement and not think about the impact to the current economy that this could have. Uh, according to a study by Burlington Northern Santa Fe, which ships a lot of coal, uh, each car on a coal train releases up to five, five hundred to two thousand pounds of coal dust, which contains arsenic, lead, mercury, chromium, nickel, selenium, and other toxic heavy metals. So over the course of a journey, a typical one hundred and twenty-five car coal train could release up to two hundred and fifty thousand pounds of coal dust per trip, which not only affects the surrounding communities and waterways, but can also disrupt the integrity of rail beds, leading to derailments. Uh, now this potential route would go right next to the Eel River, which is home to Chinook salmon and steelhead, both of which are listed as threatened under the Federal Endangered Species Act, but also Northern California summer steelhead, which just recently was listed under the California Endangered Species Act. Uh, it's also a source of drinking water for communities along the proposed route, both in the Eel River and Russian River basins, because we do divert water down to the Russian River Basin. Um, also Humboldt Bay is one of the clearest bays on the West Coast. I'm sure you notice. This is why we have a thriving oyster and oyster seed industry. Um, this is why we help, help farms popping up. This is why there is currently a fish farm looking to locate here to uptake this clean water from the bay and grow its fish. So storing coal on the shores of Humboldt Bay while waiting to transport it on barges will lead to even more coal dust and particulate matter, which can contaminate the water that a lot of these industries, including the tourism industry, rely on. Uh, particulate matter from coal has led to documented increase in respiratory illnesses, cancer, fetal defects, and neurological damage. And there is very little evidence of covered coal cars actually being used in the United States. Um, so I know that they have a lot of, and they can say all the, the great things that they want when they're trying to woo you, um, as is often the case, but that doesn't mean that those promises also always come through. Um, also in terms of rail travel, um, every two weeks, a train that is carrying hazardous material derails in the United States. Uh, and oftentimes these are on tracks that are actually, um, maintained, unlike the tracks that are being proposed here, um, along Humboldt Bay and along the Eel River. Uh, according to the Bureau of Transportation Statistics, there were one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine train derailments in twenty nineteen. Um, and a lot of the rail companies today are relying on technology that was developed decades ago. Uh, so very little research and improvement has been made to update these safety measures. Um, also power river basin coal mines are also in decline.
Sorry Caroline, thank you. That's all right. There's more next week or week after, actually. So thank you for calling in though. And our next caller, and just a reminder, has three minutes, and that is the last four digits of five, three, zero, zero. And if that's you, press star six to unmute. If you're five, three, zero, zero, please press star six. Okay, there you go.
Hi. Hello, this is Adam Lustig calling in. Um, wanted to address the, uh, well, basically the lies that Dr. Hoffman gave us last week about ivermectin. He stated there's no scientific evidence that it helps with COVID at all, but as you have all seen in the multiple emails I sent you, there's literally piles of evidence that it does work. And with over four billion doses given out worldwide, it has a safety record better than Tylenol. So I don't understand why we would suppress people from taking a potentially life-saving medicine and facing a deadly disease. Um, it's just, it's suppression. It's a crime against humanity. And anyone that participates in it is an accomplice to this crime against humanity. Also, I'd like to address what's been going on at the hospitals with the protocols. I've sent you information on that as well. Um, you can see that remdesivir has a horrible safety record. Um, it causes renal failure and liver failure, even going back to Ebola. You know, places like France won't even use it because they tried it on five patients and two of them died. But yet hospitals get a twenty percent kickback on that three thousand dollar drug when they prescribe it. So you may want to look into that. Uh, I strongly suggest you look into the adverse reactions with the vaccines. I sent you the link to the Project Veritas video from yesterday, showing what's going on in the hospitals and how the adverse reactions aren't getting reported. Um, you, if you audit the deaths, you'll see that many people had had one shot and fell ill within the fourteen days or fell ill within fourteen days of the two shots. And those are getting recorded as unvaccinated deaths, which, you know, that's just a big cover up. Um, so, you know, you are elected officials, you work for us, uh, we pay your salaries. The money in the county treasury belongs to us, you manage it for us. That's how representative government works. So what we need you to do is to audit these deaths, look into these protocols, see what's going on in the hospital, and protect the community because that's your job. Your job is not to push vaccines for Big Pharma or to push an agenda for the current regime in the White House. So, um, just wanted to remind you what your role is and give you more information so you're informed. And I just hope you do the right thing. That's all.
All right. Thank you for calling in. Um, our next speaker is five, three, zero, one. Press star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good morning. Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Noelle, and you, you can hear me, right?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I'm calling because, uh, last week or the week before, um, we circulated a petition that got, uh, in three days, got seven hundred and eighty-three signatures locally, um, asking that the county put clear and updated numbers of, um, positive cases and exposures that are happening in our schools by school on the county dashboard. Um, and the county, uh, public health responded with, "As a father, I feel safe," Dr. Ian Hoffman said, um, and said that they don't have the time or money to do that. Um, so I'm calling to ask you if that's something that can, you know, uh, that's something that we need as parents to be able to evaluate risk. We, you know, it's not enough just to be informed when our child has been exposed. We need to know what the actual, um, risk is, uh, so that we can know. Um, whatever Dr. Ian Hoffman knows that gives him the feeling of safety, other parents deserve that information as well. Um, because we don't have the tiered system anymore, uh, we, there is no objective, uh, metric for safety. Um, so the county or the community doesn't know what that, uh, uh, evaluation of safety is based on. Um, there's, there is no, there's no measurement. And so the community, seven hundred and eighty-three people, um, locally said that they need, um, information on, uh, what their rate of spread and positive cases are in their schools. Del Norte County puts this out, um, and it's not a problem. Um, they're putting it out every week, updating it by school. Um, uh, the Northern Humboldt High School District created their own dashboard because the county isn't doing this um, and is publishing their weekly numbers. Um, this is vital for protecting our children. It's the only, to me, it's like the only thing that matters in the world is if we as adults are, um, keeping these children alive to adulthood. Um, and so, uh, it, it's at this point, we were closed last year, um, when, uh, case rates were far, far lower. And, um, the public health director said last week that, uh, we are in a state of emergency and that this is the worst of the pandemic. Um, I heard my thirty seconds. And, um, so if that is the case, why are we now, um, ushering our children into school without, um, safety, uh, or not without safety, without, um, this information? Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Noelle. And there are no other hands up, so we'll go back to the board. And we're going to move on to our special presentation. And today we'll be receiving a presentation, um, which is the annual report of the Area One Agency on Aging. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Supervisor Madron. Take it over from here.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I believe Maggie's here to give us a report, so I'll just pass it right to her. Thank you, Maggie.
Welcome, Maggie.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Thank you, um, Chairwoman Bass. Thank you for the opportunity to check in with you. It's, uh, been a heck of a year and a half or whatever it has been now. Um, and I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we've been up to and where we're going here in the future. I have some slides I'd like to share just to keep me on track. Is that possible?
Yes, I believe.
Okay.
That can work out.
I will give it a go and see what happens. Okay. And of course, that's great. There.
Magic, magically works.
It does, and I'm already finished. Look at that. That's great. Hold on a second. Um, let's, let's do this a little bit differently here. Okay. Yeah, I have two screens up, and, and all of you who use two screens know that sometimes that's not helpful. So let me get this better here. All right. Gotcha. All righty. I hate it when this happens. Um, hold on just a second. Well, let me talk. Um, I was going to share with you some information about what we did during COVID and, um, as you know, COVID, uh, well, it's been there with us now for a while, and we had to shift pretty quickly to, to, uh, deal with this, to, um, there we go. I've almost got it. Let me see here. All right.
Well, we look forward to seeing you in person next year.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, can you see my screen now?
Yes, thank you.
All right, great. So, uh, so I'm just going to give you some, run through some things. We did, we, we were able, for the first time in a long time, have greater flexibility in how we spent our money because with the COVID, um, Caretters and Family, uh, Family Caregiver, Families First Act, we were allowed to, um, use the money a bit differently and not have to subcontract and go through all that rigmarole. So we reached out to quite a few organizations, um, that, that we don't usually contract with. And this is a, a example of the different groups that we worked with here in Humboldt County, a little bit in Del Norte, to, to get them resources. Um, and all of these different resources were being used. Um, we still have not received, um, the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, funding. Um, it's, it, the state knows it's how much it is, but they haven't divvied it out yet, so we're still waiting for that, believe it or not. But the first thing we did was make a lot of check-in calls with a lot of clients to see how they were doing and see how we could help. Um, as you know, we were, we serve the, the group that's hardest hit initially by this, and they were sheltering in place and, and really worried, really worried. Um, so we did a lot of that. We also did grocery shopping for people. We were driving people to medical appointments, and those stopped almost dead in their tracks. There were a few people who still needed to go because they were receiving cancer treatments. And, but other than that, they were home and we were starting, we modified that service to get people groceries. Um, we also got a lot of shelf-stable meals out to the community. Here's, uh, we did it twice. Here's the listing of where we distributed a lot of those meals to different organizations that were reaching out to their community members. Uh, we also distributed a lot of PPE, uh, and, uh, mostly targeting senior housing, senior centers, um, different folks that, that might not get them in other ways. Um, we helped Food for People and Senior Resource Center get a little extra groceries to some of their home deliver, their, their folks that receive food. And we, um, also gave out some gift cards to some groups to give to some of their older adults. Uh, we did holiday meals and also helped out in Del Norte with that. And we are, also have done some cash, what's called cash and material aid. Uh, we've, we've basically been trying to help and, and filling gaps where we could, where a quick action, quick response was needed. We provided some hot, emergency hotel stays, um, helped repair a car for somebody who, um, had to have it, lives out in Hoopa. And so we, we, we were flexible on some of this stuff. Then when the vaccines came, we started calling everybody and saying, hey, do you need help getting, getting your vaccine? And we helped get folks to their vaccines. Um, and we also worked with Mad River Hospital to help, um, with volunteers to help, uh, kind of help them streamline and, and do traffic control with all the people who are coming to their clinics. Um, we've been working with, uh, some pilot project with some local Hispanic, uh, grocery stores to be able to provide, um, credit, uh, you know, money to their shoppers. And we've now expanded that to other, others grocery stores. We're not allowed to hand people cash, so we have to be creative in how we provide them what they need. And what we were hearing from a lot of people is people need, needed food. They needed help with their utility bills. Um, so this is what we've been doing. We're also have distributed air purifiers in advance of the fires, uh, to Bridgeville and Willow Creek areas. And we're working on disaster kits. And we are, um, we have about thirty iPads that we can distribute to people who live alone, who, uh, don't have data plans now, can't afford them. And we're also providing training uh, classes for them so that they actually learn to use them. We, we have distributed, we distributed about thirty, uh, chrome, or tablets to our folks who are in our exercise classes. And what we discovered is without some real hands-on support, many, um, you know, a third, not a third, about a quarter of them, were struggling to use them. So we're offering the training now with, through AARP and Senior Planet. We've got a lot of funding coming. Like I said, there's a lot of action at the state level and at the federal level. But the state level, there's a lot of action and funding, uh, that will be coming not just to us, but to, um, county and other, other, other support services. But again, we're, we're waiting on a lot of this. Uh, and most importantly, some of the nutrition programs to improve their infrastructure. Often we give them money for food, but they need to maintain their, their buildings and their, uh, equipment and things like that, vehicles. So hopefully we'll be able to spread some of that money around. The other thing that's happening significantly that we're spending time interacting and talking about is uh, there is a master plan on aging that the governor has put forward. And you can, there's a webpage for that. If you want more information, I pulled some pictures off the page. And it's, it's really kind of directing how the state is looking at aging services or services for aging. This slide's a little squiggly, but they have five goals, um, five areas that all their initiatives are in. These are the five areas, looking at housing, health, equity and inclusion, caregiving, and affordability of aging. Um, the first one, housing, they're just, they're looking at housing options and transportation, all these different things. Um, they're also looking at healthcare and, and how to make it more coordinated, uh, and, and improved. Even looking at nursing homes, looking at dementia, all these different areas. They're, um, looking at equity and inclusion, um, not just from a, um, ethnicity standpoint, but from an age standpoint. There's a lot of ageism in our society and the workforce. And, uh, they're looking at different ways to help protect older adults from exploitation and abuse because of this inherent ageism in our society. Um, looking at caregivers, obviously caregivers really have a tough time. It's a thirty-six hour day for many of them and not getting the support financially or otherwise to, to continue to do that. Many people, um, leave their jobs so they can provide a care to elders. And I think there isn't always appreciation. We talk about families a lot and, um, supporting families, but families include their elders. It's not just their children. It's children, it's people of all ages. So we're really, um, it's important to recognize those needs. And then affordable aging, um, they're looking at the issues around homelessness. The fastest growing homeless population in our state, if not country, right now is people fifty plus who are homeless for the first time. The pandemic exacerbated this. There are people who lost jobs or had to leave jobs because of fear of COVID, and they're not getting these jobs back. We have a lot of first time, uh, first time, uh, homeless folks. And I know Arcade House Partnership, their, their housing is serving primarily people over sixty right now. They're working with a lot of older women who are homeless. Um, these are, these are real issues in our community. Um, there's one initiative that the master plan is looking at is they're evaluating area agencies on aging. And they're, they're, um, reviewing, reviewing this, the, the system. And one of the things they're looking at is whether each county should have their own area agency. Um, there are fifty-eight counties, and, uh, we right now serve Del Norte and Humboldt. Some of the other triple As have multiple counties. They have five to seven counties, especially up here in the rural part of the state. And they're looking at whether, whether they should reconfigure that. They're also looking at the location of the triple As and whether, um, it should, should all the triple As should be the same and be housed in county government? Or should it remain, you know, with community choice, um, and kind of remain as it is? There's about six or seven of us who are nonprofit organizations. The rest are already in county government um, or they're joint power, kind of joint power situations. So, um, we do have some concerns at the, our association level of what the, the motivation is exactly for this because, um, they already can, um, you know, they already can have, um, come to us and say, hey, we don't want you to do this anymore. We want the county to do it. And the county already has the first right of refusal. So, but they are looking at the model. They want to, um, they really feel like, uh, services are not coordinated enough in communities. Uh, and it's true, if you're an older adult or a person with disabilities and you need help, sometimes you have no idea where to go. And, and services are disjointed in terms of funding sources. So, you know, we can help you with this, but someone else does that. So they're really trying to look at a, a better way to coordinate services within communities. Um, and I think that could be done regardless of where the location of the triple A is. Um, they are taking input on the pros and cons and making these changes. It would cost them a lot more if they had fifty-eight triple As. And they would have fifty-eight different. And they would have 58 different contracts, different area plans that we do, different. It would be a lot more work for the state. So I'm not sure it's the best option, but certainly better coordination and it is a, is a great idea. One of the things I wanted to add about that was that one of the things we're looking at locally is what's called an Aging and Disability Resource Connection, which is a way, it's kind of creating a hub, a way to bring the different organizations together to have better coordination of how we serve older adults and people with disabilities. We've been meeting with Tri-County Independent Living and we are going to be applying for what's called immersion status for this, where we can get some funding from the state to start developing that system. And it's not a new entity, agency. What it is, is it's improving the coordination among existing agencies. The county, I've been, we've been talking with Conny Beck a little bit, and the county is a major player in that kind of system because you provide a lot of the services that people need to access. So we'll be working with the county moving forward on this to, to create that system. We'd have, if we get granted emerging status, we'll have two years to put it all together and emerge and then apply for actual official status. This is something ADRCs have been around for at least 10 years. And there's about six or seven counties right now that are, have been running them. The challenge has been there was no money associated with putting these things together and, and organizing them. And the state has now started putting money toward that effort. And so a lot of counties will be applying this year to become emerging. And we may or may not be chosen this year, but if not, we'll apply next year. So, and the last thing I want to mention is you see on the screen, our address, we have, we are moving. We have owned half of the building we're in for, since 2008. And owning half a building as a nonprofit is not necessarily the best, the best strategic plan. It's been a bit challenging for us. And we have found a buyer who has, I don't know, some of you may have already heard because they've told people that United Indian Health Services is going to be creating a campus. They're using our building, the old building, that, that building that Ink People recently was in, in the parking lot there across from the Eureka Inn. And they're creating a, a campus here in Eureka for services. So that's really exciting. That will, we have better access to their, their patient population that lives in the South Park, Southern Moore part of the county, believe it or not. People don't like to drive from Eureka to Arcata to get services. Which is, now that I live in Arcata, I feel the same way about driving to Eureka. So we are incredibly spoiled up here that we think a 10-minute drive is a hard thing to do. But that's how we are. So we will be moving. And we will have a better, a sustainable, more sustainable model for, for our costs in terms of building costs. So that's exciting for us. It's a big deal though, to pack up an office. I was told, I was told by Humboldt Moving and Storage that, you know, to sit down before I read their quote, I said, oh, how much can it be? He goes, you have a lot of desks. So, and those are the hardest things, I think, to move. So we're looking forward to that move, but that will be happening. And I would like to leave it open if you have any questions at this time. For me, I would be happy to entertain those.
All right. Anyone have any questions? Actually, if you want to close that, it's probably easier to see if you have questions. All right. Any board members, comments, questions for Maggie? Oh, Supervisor Madron?
Um, yes, I just want to thank Maggie and all the, the staff and community for all of what Area 1 Agency on Aging does for us. A lot of people don't realize the tremendous resources they provide to our community. So thank you. Thank you for all that you do. That's mainly what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Rex?
Yeah. Hi Maggie, how you doing? I, I had the pleasure of serving on the board with Maggie for a few years. And I think, I, I like the idea of the move. I think that is a good idea for you and more, I think it'll end up being a more accessible in the long run, benefit you, as you said. Owning half of businesses, owning half a building is not the most profitable way to do things. So I think that's, it's a good thing. At the time, it sounded like a great idea and it was a good way to add some security. In the long run, if we could all foresee what we do. But again, to echo what Mr. Madron said, the benefits that you guys provide are great. And if you call there, you always get an answer and you get a way to. We have a lot of seniors that don't have a lot of people to fall back on. And it's nice to have that, that fallback on it and somebody you can ask a question for and everything else. And that's, you know, again, I implore, I implore neighbors, if you have an older person in the neighborhood, start a relationship with them, just so they know they have someone to call, take them a meal or anything else. Because we're here because they did their job when they were younger. So anyway, thanks Maggie.
Thank you. It's so true what you said. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, add me to the list of folks who are excited about all the services that you guys have been offering and, and for all these years. And also, you know, the idea of, of access in terms of location and location and location. But that's also, you know, a fundamental part of community design. And I know that, you know, AARP and other organizations are active pushing into land use planning and community design as it pertains to our, our folks, our elders. And, and, and you're right, it is inconvenient for many elders to get into a car and go to a place. And so walkable community is really important. And I just, and I know you have in the past and I hope in the future to see that voice from your organization to help us in our community designs to, to, to make more accessible spaces. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. I was, I was recently appointed to the Eureka City Economic Development Commission. And one of the things that I look at is housing is, in terms of economic development, housing is huge. And, and we need the kind of housing for older adults so they can, if they want to, they can move out of larger family homes and into smaller, more easier upkeep and, and free up these homes for people, for families who can use them. And right now, what we see in our community is a lot of older adults who have the finances move out of the area because they can't find what they need here. So the efforts that are being done here, certainly with Life Care Humboldt, to try to provide better options for people so they don't leave the community. Because the people with the money in our community are people generally over 50 years of age. And when they leave the community, they take their wisdom and their assets. And so we need to, we need to provide a space here in our community where people want to stay here and can stay here. And that means housing. It also means affordable and accessible and real healthcare, you know? So there's a lot of factors that influence where people choose to live and how your economy develops as a, as a part of that.
Maggie, I just wanted to say that I was really impressed seeing all the things that you folks did in response to the challenges that were brought forward with them, COVID. And, and so seeing your list of all the outreach efforts and deliveries, you were very busy. And I know it's truly appreciated in the community for sure.
And we were also still doing the other stuff we're supposed to do. I think I, you know, I got to give a shout out to our staff. We went remote. Everyone learned how to work from home and learned to understand their computer and different things in a way they hadn't expected. Most of our staff are over age 60, if not 65, and they are incredibly resilient and flexible. And, and just moved right along and continued to do the work. And one of the reasons we can move to a smaller space too, is recognizing that will probably keep the hybrid model forever. Just want to give a plug that when you're out hiring people, look at older adults. They're great workers. And they bring a lot to the, bring a lot to the table. So, and they're out there. So I just want to give a plug for that. Well, ours are, our workers are excellent. Thank you, Virginia.
You're welcome. And I will see there's, oops, we'll go to Supervisor Bushnell, then I'll go to public comment. Or okay, we'll start with Supervisor Bushnell, then Madron, and then public comment.
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell? Yeah. Virginia, is your screen frozen?
No.
There's a bunch of frozen. Anyway, Maggie, thank you for the presentation. I really enjoyed it. Being new to the board, I really rely on these types of presentations to know all that is provided in our county. I think there's nothing worse than having an elderly person that doesn't have any family and available to them and can't get services, groceries or so forth and so on. So, you know, our elders are cherished members and have, have, deserve the help that you provide. And I just want to thank you so much.
All right. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. You know, you mentioned the Home Share Program and Life Care. The Home Share Program is so great. I mean, we've got students, Humboldt State College students without housing and pairing them up with a senior that has two or three bedrooms, extra bedrooms in a home just seems like such a great, great program. And, you know, those folks can help with shopping and landscape chores, all kinds of things. So highly encourage people to, to look into that. And then Life Care Humboldt, thank you for mentioning them. As you know, Ann Lindsay, our previous county health officer has been very engaged in trying to bring that project forward. And we're making some really good progress in McKinnonville with our town center planning process where there is a lot of hope that that facility might be able to go in there with the Pearson's development there. So anyway, thanks for mentioning both those. Those are some great programs in the community.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I do know we have one hand up, so I will go to public comment. And that is 7454. Let's start, 16, you?
I'd like to echo the comments made complimenting Area 1 on aging there and Maggie's work. It's so easy down in Mexico compared to here. You have three generations of family living in the same home or on the same property. And it's just a natural transition and caretaking for the old. And we don't have that here. So we're at a major disadvantage. The family seems to be dysfunctional here. The, the getting the kids into the homes is perfect. I was down in LAX, the women's volleyball team was down there. That whole team would be any of those people and you could just watch them and their character and their nature. All of those people would be perfect to live in a home. And I think anybody who was an older person would be blessed to have one or more of those people living with them in those situations. We, we are lacking, you know, I'm, everything I talk about regarding housing, there is not really the ability or a real functional thing that the county should be doing. And that's putting, be putting these two different groups together. There needs to be a real promotion and development of a bulletin board for housing, whether it be a landlord, do you wish to have a, or especially a senior person, do you wish to have a sheriff's deputy or sheriff's deputy family coming here, sharing their house with you? Or, or the students or any of these things. We, we're totally lacking in the functional ability to put these two different needs together. And I think the county ought to budget, I don't know, a couple million dollars, $5 million, whatever, whatever toward this particular topic of, of putting these housing needs and housing ability together. And it, it's not happening. It's, it's a fatal flaw out there as far as I can see. Maggie, there, there, there may be some, some money coming down the pipe. And of course, for those of us who, who either have the ability to do that when we pass on or afterwards or before, or else to direct money towards certain groups. So if at some time you are reached out by a certain entity to maybe contribute a significant amount of funding to what you're doing there, I think your good karma is the reason you're going to be getting it. And I'm, I'm so remorse to see so many people leaving the area, the older people for many reasons, either they've been driven out of their neighborhoods by their neighbors, which is a pet peeve of mine. But thank you for what you're doing and continuing. And I think you'll find that some really good karma might be headed your way. My phone number is 6685288. If you wish to discuss that further, I'm happy to do so. So anyway, thanks for what you do. Bye.
Thank you. Kent and no other hands are up, so we'll go back to the board. Any other comments? All right, not seeing none. I don't know, Tracy, would you like a motion to receive and file, or can we just thank Maggie for being here?
I think that a thank you is appropriate.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Maggie, for being here with us today and doing all your good work. And we'll see you in person next time, we hope.
I hope so. Thank you all very much for all the work you do. I am going to go to another meeting and appreciate all your time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we're going to go to the consent item that was polled, which is, I believe, D14. And I think Supervisor Bone polled it. So I don't know, CEO Hayes, if you want to comment prior, or shall I just turn it over to Supervisor Bone?
I, I would like to provide comments prior, if that's possible.
I just was going to give an opportunity to explain why I pulled it, but yeah, definitely, either way it works.
Thank you, Chair Bass. This resolution comes before your board to allow for efficient and effective management of day-to-day operations during an emergency. COVID is a great example where a resolution of this sort would have been very helpful. Throughout COVID, we have implemented a telework policy, an emergency sick leave, leave bank accrual policies, overtime compensation policies, disaster, disaster service worker policies, masking mandates. The masking mandate is, is a great example. Recently, when I have had to take action that is similar to what this resolution authorizes. In response to the Delta spike, it was becoming apparent that we needed to re-implement the masking mandate in county facilities. And so I implemented that policy within just a few days' time and then returned to your board to ratify that policy following its implementation. That's what this resolution essentially would allow for my office to do. This resolution can also be rescinded at any point in time by your board. And this resolution allows your board to take any alternate action should you find that a policy adopted by the county administrative office is ineffective or inappropriate. There has been a, a little bit of angst surrounding this policy. So I would like to suggest that the policy, or excuse me, that the resolution be modified to include a ratification of any policies adopted pursuant to this resolution at the next possible board meeting. I think that that may provide a little bit of of security in the authority that this policy allocates to the county administrative office. With that, I will pass it to Supervisor Bone if he would like to add any comments to it. And would gladly answer any questions of your board or department heads. And I also have available a revised resolution if you would like for me to share that for the group.
Through the chair. Yeah, I think CEO Hayes answered all the questions that I had. She actually answered them yesterday afternoon for me because I had a couple of department heads discuss, and they had a couple of ideas on this and some good ideas. And I think she's trying to alleviate any fears that this is a power grab or anything else. It's just, the whole word in here is emergency. And the last thing during an emergency is we need to try to get all the chickens in one coop to vote one way. I mean, we're going to have to have somebody take the lead in any emergency. And hopefully with the guidance of, you know, HR, county council, and then the affected department heads, I think we're there. I don't think we're that alienated. I don't think we're that far separated. We were a couple of floors away from each other. So I was, I was pretty satisfied. So I was actually surprised to hear I pulled this. I thought this was Supervisor Bushnell's had pulled. I'm not, I don't think I pulled it because I verified that I wasn't pulling it this morning, but I'm, not, it's fine. I, I think the, I think, I think it's been asked and answered properly. And I, and I really appreciate CEO Hayes taking the lead on this. And, and, and it is a shortcoming. Bar none. It, it is a shortcoming when we have to react quickly to stuff. And I don't know if anybody notices, but 97% of all emergencies happen after 5:00 and on the weekends. They never happen 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. That's just the way things go. So being nimble and quick, I think, is probably So being nimble and quick, I think, is probably a better way to go for our county. So I appreciate the time and diligence that was spent in the explanation. And I will pass it on to Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I heard the B, and I guess I made, I was wrong. Sorry about that, Supervisor Bushnell.
It's fine.
We'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you. So I wanted, I talked to Alicia extensively last night, and her and I went back and forth. And the thing that I wanted to have discussion is that I wanted to be able to come to the, to a board meeting when possible, and that was why I pulled it.
So does the ratification language that she's suggesting make you more comfortable?
It does, but I would like to hear a public comment.
Okay. And Supervisor Wilson, you had your hand up, I thought?
I did, but I can wait till after public comment.
All right, so we'll go to public comment. And we have one hand raised, and we'll come back and see the sheriff on as well. But so our commenter we have at the moment is seven, four, five, four. Welcome.
Virginia, Virginia, can you hear me?
Yes, Kent, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I did, I appreciate, you know, these being polled to public. Would like to see public meetings as soon as possible in some shape or form. This has been stated before. I did wish to compliment your interim CAO, Alicia Hayes. There seems to be a whole different attitude, in my opinion, coming out of that office compared to what's been happening in the past. And I do say positive things about your staff, Rex, when I have positive things to say and negative things when I have negative. This is a positive thing to work these things out and to what's in the best interest of the public and your employees is definitely a positive thing. And so I did wish to make that comment. We would like to see, like I say, as soon as possible, the ability of at least the supervisors to attend the meetings in the chamber, the more faces we actually see there. Again, I still have great angst regarding the fact that we cannot even see if you're in the meeting, during the meeting, you see each other, we don't, as far as the public goes. And I know we're still under the guidelines provided as far as that goes, but the transparency is not there until such time as all of you are on the screen. We can see that you're actively participating, being either in the chamber or out of the chamber. And so I did, I did wish to make that comment as far as transparency and public participation. Sooner the better, that people, a lot of people will not wish to come in to the chamber. But I think with the guidelines we have, the ability to go and currently eat in a restaurant and things, and following those guidelines, we wouldn't even be wearing a mask as long as we were having a snack or drinking something in the chamber, would we? Or on a plane or anywhere else, I think this is doable, the sooner the better. And I do, I do, I do strongly support you accommodating though, different wishes that your employees may have regarding not being subjected to COVID. I do know quite a few people that are dying and have died from it. And it's a serious thing for those of you out there who are not willing to wear the mask or not willing to get the shot and things there. Again, shame, shame, shame. I think you really need to get it together. Thank you for having the time to speak on this topic.
All right, and we'll move to the next speaker. What I was going to say is, I was kind of getting far afield there, and I was just trying to pull it back to the ratification and emergencies. And but all righty, thank you for the comments. And I do not see any other hands up in the public. So we'll go back to the board, and I see the sheriff. You moved places on my screen. Yes, Sheriff Hansel.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that we're bringing this up for public comments and ability to address the board on this. I spoke to Alicia Hayes a couple times yesterday. I really appreciate her openness on this and willing to have a conversation about it. And, you know, this is one of those things, as the Director of Emergency Management, coming and seeing, you know, something like this on the agenda. You know, it took me back just a little bit to understand fully, you know, where this was coming from and why this was, you know, coming to the board today. You know, I totally trust Alicia. We've had, we've worked well together. She's doing a great job in her current role. And but we always want to look at the future CAO or future position and say, is this the amount of power we want to give to a single person in the event of an emergency? And, you know, it talks about implementation and enforcement of policies countywide. And the enforcement aspect of things, you know, does give me some concern is, you know, there's a lot of questions regarding that. How is this going to be? How is the CAO going to enforce these policies? What framework do they have to investigate and enforce, you know, these type of policies? There's no instruction here of working with elected officials or department heads. It's just about the CAO creating these policies in conjunction with human resources risk manager as well as county council. And I know personally, Alicia will not do that. She's already brought things to all the departments. We talked about the policy group when it comes to this. But again, looking at the future, you know, is this really necessary? Do we have to have the CAO have this much power? And is it, should they just be able to create implements, leave the discipline up to each department heads or elected officials? That's something that we should consider. And also, I think we should put a date on it as far as when it should go to the board. When I declare a local emergency or a public health officer declares a local emergency, has to come to the board within seven days. And to have that consistency here where, you know, the board has to come into session within seven days after emergency personnel rules are implemented, you know, would bring some consistencies through this. So just some concerns about that, as well as, you know, if this is related to COVID, you know, just make this a part of the COVID emergency and give the power just, you know, during this time. And but this is talking about all future emergencies. And so anyway, those are my concerns, and I appreciate you hearing me out today.
Thank you, Sheriff. Director Mattson?
Yeah, I want to reiterate Billy's concerns, not about Alicia. We have full faith in her. But this is the kind of policy that can get buried for years, and then you get a bad CAO, and all of a sudden they can wield an enormous amount of power. So like Billy, I would recommend a time limit on it, or at least an annual refresher, just to make sure that everybody's aware of this policy and where it is. You know, I do have some concerns. I don't have any concerns about Alicia and what she's doing. But I do have concerns about, you know, people getting a lot of power and power going to people's heads because they can mandate certain things. And if you can't react within seven days, certain bad things can happen to our employees, and I would like to see that protection somehow. I like the idea of coming back for ratification. But again, I would reiterate what Billy said about putting a time limit on this, or at least have it come up annually for discussion so that everybody is aware of it and nobody forgets about the power here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mattson. Supervisor Bone?
Well, I think the thing to remember is we can resend this at our next board meeting. And I, and I keep hearing about the next terrible CAO we're hiring. And I understand that can happen. We can, we can elect people, we can hire people that just don't fill the bill. I mean, that does happen. But on the way this is going, and I've got great respect for the sheriff, I understand on the enforcement thing. I hate the word power, the one person having the power, even I hate three people having the power. I don't think five people should have all the power. But I mean, I think the idea is to implement what would be best for us. And I mean, I don't know, can we, can we satisfy some of your concerns that in conjunction she talks with the emergency services, which would, in this case, be Billy or something like that, to make sure that we're, you know, not crossing a line and we don't have one person going nuts on us? I just can't wait to meet the next CAO. This is going to be fun. But no, I'm just saying, and I appreciate the fact is, is the forward thinking by both Tom Mattson and the sheriff and the kind words they said about, you know, the tough position we dropped Alicia into says, hey, oh, by the way, you're going to fill this bill. So I, if that would satisfy anything, so she does, I mean, I don't mind one person being able to push the button, but I'd like her to ask one other person maybe, and that would probably go to emergency services since we're doing an emergency declaration. She would still have the overriding fact, but just as in this, as in this consent item, the confusion when you read this going, hey, I thought this was, you know, are we taking this away? This got a lot smoother yesterday when everybody started talking about it. So, and I think maybe that was just the, just the, just the position we were put in. So I appreciate the input. I appreciate the faith that we have in our interim, probably going to be our CAO, Alicia Hayes. So I just, I think if we could maybe add something, and I don't know, CEO Hayes, if that's available, or if you want to do that. I know she's not power hungry, so I think she's just trying to be efficient. And Billy, in the last, you know, since you've been here and a few with Mike in the last 10 years, we've, we've come across a few minor floods, we've come across a few, a few situations, road closures and everything else, where we've had to be more nimble, and it would have been easier if we could have declared the emergency sooner. And with maybe you and Alicia working together, and that's not to say we won't elect a crazy sheriff sometime. So I don't want to put it, I don't want to say we're just going to have a crazy CAO either. But I'm just saying, I think the idea of having two people work together and getting to that where everybody's comfortable. And I, I think when you talk about you two, you guys do put a certain amount of comfort when you face the public. So I don't know if that would be, if that's completely off the trails or not, but someone for you guys to bounce the idea off of. I don't know who that's directed at. That would probably be directed at our CAO.
Through the chair, I would be happy to add the sheriff or the emergency services director into the list of departments that are required to be collaborated with in implementation of such a policy. Currently, it names the Director of Human Resources Risk Manager and County Council. So we can certainly make this a four-person party if that helps to alleviate some of the concerns.
Thank you. And I will go to the sheriff shortly, but I do see Supervisor Bushnell has her hand up.
Thank you, through the chair. So I just want, I like the idea of the seven days also. Coming to a meeting within seven days, we can call an emergency meeting that can happen within 24 hours. So I don't think that's unreasonable. And also, for myself, I just want to say, when we put in policies like this, we're not talking about a person, we're talking about a position. And it's nothing against Alicia at all, and it wasn't against her that I was concerned, but it's a, it's a position, not a, not a person when we enact policies.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. Sheriff Hansel, did you want to? I believe Director CAO, excuse me, Hayes made a suggestion, and we'd like to hear your thoughts on.
Yeah, I do agree with that suggestion. I think that is a good thing to have in here. At least we know that it's going to be a coordinated effort when there is a local disaster, a local emergency. And as the Director of Emergency Services, I think that is good. You know, I also would just be very cautious again about that enforcement aspect of things. You know, implementing policy is one thing, but enforcing the policy is another thing. And to have that, you know, squarely in the CAO's office, I think that's, there's a lot of questions that that does, does cause by having that in there.
Supervisor Bushnell and I would like to make a comment.
I just wanted to ask Alicia, so the enforcement process would be done through cooperation with the department heads? Is that the thought process? Correct, yeah. The enforcement will follow the county's established merit system rules and employee relations guidelines. And I'll note on top of that, that the county administrator already has the authority to administer, enforce, and carry out the policies, rules, regulations, orders, and code sections as implemented and directed by your board. So this remains within that authority already allocated to the county administrative officer. So in terms of the enforcement component of it, it would follow suit with the role that my office plays in any enforcement that takes place across the organization. So currently, you do things like that through cooperation with department heads? Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I guess my part, my concern or whatever comments with enforcement is just that I think somebody's got to be able, if there is a director somewhere in the future who, let's take the mask mandate, just because if you have one director that says, well, I don't want my, you know, you guys don't have to wear masks, I'm not going to enforce it. To me, that could be a problem. So, you know, I would, I would like to know that there's, in that coordination, that there would be, I would just like to make sure that we don't have in the future, some other department head or director that goes off the rails either. I mean, this can be looked at both ways. So it just, I think, takes, keeping an eye on what is actually happening. I'm curious if there's an interest in the annual review. I think Director Mattson brought that up, and is that something that we'd want to move forward with also? Or is it more just the addition of the sheriff and the ratification within seven days? Is there anything else we need to do? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, through the chair. So on the topic of the review, couldn't it be, if we get dissatisfied with it, couldn't it be reviewed at any time sponsored by a supervisor? Bringing, coming forward to the agenda?
I would think it could.
Alicia, is that a correct statement? It is correct, yes. Your board can rescind or modify this resolution at any point in time. And also, any, any policies implemented through this resolution are only in effect through the duration of the emergency. So that places a limitation on those policies as well. Okay, thank you.
All right, so is there a suggested, the motion that, you know, to just make the addition of a sheriff to the team and ratification within seven days, and then putting a clause that it can be rescinded at any time? At the, you know, I mean, if someone can bring it back, or maybe that doesn't even need to be in there because we can do it anyway. Supervisor Bushnell? I'm just trying to find a motion.
Yeah, I would, I would make the motion, I think it would be, Alicia, maybe help me here, but so it would be staff recommendation with the addition of adding the sheriff and to be ratified within seven days of the emergency order. Is that correct? To add the Director of Emergency Services to the collaboration team and to have the policies adopted pursuant to this resolution ratified by the Board of Supervisors within seven days. Okay, Tracy, where is she?
Tracy, there you go.
Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be my motion.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments before we vote? All right, Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks. Yeah, I was appreciative of what interim CAO Hayes is trying to put together here. And, and I appreciate the negotiation to get us over the line, so I'm supportive.
Okay, then Tracy, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
You bet.
Thank you. Five, zero.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll move on to the first departmental item. And this one comes to us from the CAO's office, and it's regarding project trellis funding and programmatic changes. At this time, I'll turn it over to CAO Hayes, and she can go from there.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Our economic development team has been working closely with the cultivation community in addressing concerns that they have regarding reduced prices for products and regulation challenges in coming into compliance in a legal market sector. So today's board item comes to you to help to address some of those concerns and provide support to the cannabis community. So with that, I'll pass it over to Scott Adair, Director of Economic Development, to give the staff report on all that is contained in this board item.
Welcome, Scott.
Hello, board. Good morning, Chair Bass. My name is Scott Adair. I'm
Hello, board. Good morning, uh, Chair Bass. My name is Scott Adair. I'm the county's director of economic development. Over the last several weeks, our office has been inundated with requests and queries from the cannabis cultivation community for what I can only characterize as being urgent or perhaps even desperate pleas for assistance. These pleas for aid and relief stem from the recent bottoming of the cannabis market where the price per pound is now less than the cost to cultivate, process, and distribute that product. Today, our staff brings to your board two recommendations to provide immediate relief to the cultivation community. Uh, before reviewing these recommendations in detail, however, I would like to make a minor modification to the spending plan. For recommendation number one, call your attention to that section of the agenda item. If you look at spending plan items four and five, under recommendation number one. Uh, Director John Ford of the county's planning and building department and I communicate regularly. And he shared with me recently that the items under four and five are activities where planning and building staff are already engaged and are activities which planning and building has prioritized in order to support the cannabis community. As such, your board does not need to explicitly approve or direct economic development staff to engage in these activities as they are already occurring. I will share with you that the economic development team and staff as part of its direction under Project Trellis, we continue to explore other external funding opportunities to enhance the dollars paid into the trellis program by the cannabis community. And our staff also works with outside agencies to provide better advocacy of the Humboldt County cannabis industry under existing economic development programs, which already share a nexus with our county's comprehensive economic development strategy. And this includes an existing relationship with the state that we have cultivated over a number of years for our equity program and other trellis initiatives, as well as an MOU which exists between our economic development division and planning and building, uh, which defines collaboration between our two agencies to support the cannabis community. Today's staff is asking your board to approve an addition of $1 million to Project Trellis. Whereas your board has previously approved CARES Act funding and other COVID-related aid to the business and nonprofit community for the adverse impact of COVID-19 on those communities. Cannabis businesses and cultivators have not been able to access any pandemic-related relief dollars because they're derived from federal funding sources. Therefore, $800,000 of this allocation would be used for a distinct micro grant program separate of the existing trellis micro grant program, which is available to all cannabis businesses. This 800,000 would be aimed solely at cultivators and those who have experienced or faced crop loss due to fire or fire mitigation or drought or because of, or who also face adverse market conditions caused by the dip in cannabis prices. $200,000 of the $1 million asked will be used for an emergency short-term marketing and advertising initiative aimed at providing regional market visibility for the current and subsequent harvest cycles. I want to note that our staff already meets with the cannabis community on a regular basis through regularly scheduled and reoccurring stakeholder calls. We've received direct input for the potential use of these dollars and will bring a recommendation to your board's appointed project trellis committee at the project trellis committee's next scheduled meeting. Staff also brings before your board today recommended changes to the county's local equity program manual. These are designed to enhance and expand the services already available under this program to make them more broadly available to the cannabis community. Uh, and these changes also include adjustment to income thresholds, eligibility requirements, as well as the incorporation of an equity certification component and paid equity certification services for Humboldt County cultivators, as many dispensaries and major markets are now requiring equity certification for cannabis products prior to placement on their shelves. As part of this item today, our team also brings two brief updates to your board. One, on the existing request for proposals for marketing, for which staff is extending the RFP period by a final 30 days to allow for greater participation and to encourage competition. And also a brief update on the progress of Project Trellis's micro grant and equity initiatives since the inception of the Project Charles program. So I will turn it now over to economic development specialist Peggy Murphy for a brief review of these two updates, after which our team will be available for any questions that you may have. Peggy, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. Welcome. Hi. Thank you for having me today. As Scott mentioned, my name is Peggy Murphy and I'm the economic development specialist working on Project Trellis. I'm going to give you a brief progress report for the three, uh, programs under Project Trellis. That's the marketing, the cannabis business micro grant, and the local equity program. There's more detail in the staff report associated with this agenda item. If there's something specific you would like me to talk about further, feel free to let me know. So starting with the marketing program, in 2019, we released an initial RFP. There was a very broad range of responses to this. The marketing ad hoc committee at that time decided that there needed to be a better focus for that. A marketing assessment was then completed by HCGA. We brought that to your board on November, in November 2020, along with a recommendation for language for the second RFP. We released the second RFP in May of 2021. After lots of marketing and meetings and outreach, we didn't receive as much interest as we'd hoped. So we extended it a month, did further advertising, marketing, outreach meetings. In the end, we only received one proposal. Because of this, we've decided to issue a new RFP with broader language for possible proposers. This will ensure a competitive process and the taxpayer parcolons are being used appropriately. That brings me to the micro grant. We have done two years of micro grants at this time. We have had 14 awardees in the first year for a total of $180,000. The second year had 16 awardees for a total of $520,000. The upcoming round has approximately $280,000 allocated to it, and we're anticipating launch of that in December. This leads me now to the local equity program. We have run version 1.0 with the funds used or allocated by the Bureau of Cannabis Control for a total of 1.33 million. We are completing the very last contracts right now. Eighty-four awardees are receiving services through this program. We've opened and closed the application period for version 2.0 of the local equity program. This is using funds from the governor's office of business and economic development for a total of $2.4 million. We will be reopening the application using the updates in the amended local equity program manual that is also part of this agenda item. Additionally, we've received another award of 1.05 million from the governor's office of business and economic development for use in the future year. We also anticipate bidding on more funds at the end of the year. That concludes my quite brief report on the project, progress of Project Charles programs. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Peggy. Um, Scott, do you want people to ask questions now with Peggy or wait until a different time?
That concludes our report on this agenda items. So this time, turn it back over to you, Chair Bass.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Um, supervisor Bone?
Yeah. Hi, Scott. Thank you guys for that. Um, I know there's a lot of moving parts to this. How are the, I, and, and just for the reasons, I'm getting phone calls from, um, some of the awardees or the, the, the grants, both the equity and the trellis grants, that some haven't, and I don't know what the numbers are, have not received their payment yet. Are we taking quite a while to pro, yeah? I know they've been awarded, but I, I don't know if it's actually an award till they actually receive it because I know some of these couple that called yesterday were for culverts and water tanks. And if we don't get those in within the next six weeks, we're going to be putting that off till the rainy season because you can't, you know, can't build pads and everything in the culverts and things like that. Is, are the payments going out? Is there a holdup or have they made, uh, uh, mistakes in their applications? They've already been awarded, but they have to do more follow-up? Walk us through how somebody gets a grant and then why and when they get paid.
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you, um, supervisor Bone. And through the chair, I can respond to that. Uh, you are correct in that there are two types of grant programs under Project Trellis. Uh, there is the micro grant program and the equity grant program. Under the micro grant program, uh, there were 14 awardees for round one. Uh, 14 recommendations were approved by the project trials committee and then later brought to your board for ratification for funding. Out of those 14 awardees, uh, eight initial disbursements have been made for projects. There are five completed projects which have been paid out. And there is still one initial payment that is pending. Uh, out of round two, uh, we're waiting on one awardee to return a contract. Uh, there are two awardees who we're waiting on for additional documentation. Uh, two are outside of our office. We have processed those and they're now waiting on payment and processing. And nine of those 16 awardees have received, uh, initial payment. It's important to note that typically there are two phases of payment. Uh, one at the beginning of the project and then one after the project is completed. Then there is the equity grant program. Uh, for the equity grant program of the 84 total equity awards which were approved, uh, only four are presently with our office for processing. Uh, the remainder are now outside of our office waiting on other departments or divisions for processing. And we continue to, to monitor those and, um, uh, communicate status and findings to the cannabis community and where those applications are at in terms of payment as we receive information into our office.
So on the, through the chair, through the equity program, is there a timeframe that, um, that we could lose out on this funding if we don't, um, basically get it, um, implemented?
Yes. Uh, Specialist Murphy, is that date end of December?
The initial round, it is October 1st.
So we have.
And that's just due to our obligation with the state for the receipt of those funds. The micro grant monies primarily come from the cultivation community and are funded through Measure S. However, the equity grant dollars are primarily, uh, there's a small county match from Measure S, but most of that funding does come from the state. So, so the funds could be in jeopardy if we don't get those payments out quickly.
All right. Is there a way we can make sure it happens? I don't know.
Uh, our office has completed everything that we need to on our end for, um, all but four of the 84 equity grants. Uh, the four that are still within our office are pending contracts. We're waiting on the grant awardees to execute contracts or to provide information that is necessary in order to move the contract forward. Uh, there are 66 that are still pending vendor requests. Those are, our office collaborates with outside departments for the processing of those after we complete everything that is necessary in our division. Then they're moved on for the next phase of processing for payment. Uh, of those 66 pending vendor requests, some of those were moved out of our office several months ago. Uh, some of them just, just a, a week or so ago. So as we receive contracts and supporting documentation from the community, which occurs over a period of time, not all at once, we then package those vendor and payment requests and then move them out of our office for final processing.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. Um, Scott, so out of 84, none of them paid yet? Out of the equity?
Out of the 84, one is pending initial payment.
When were those, um, um, what was the date that those were awarded? Just about?
No, yeah, that, that's fine. Uh, Specialist, uh, Murphy, do you have that date?
July. The award date was July. And just to clarify, three have received payment.
Three have received payment? Thank you, Peggy. Um, my questions are about the agenda item today. So on the, um, um, criteria for the $1 million, how, how will that criteria be awarded? Or decided?
So when we developed the rubric and scoring for the other micro grants, we worked with the project trellis committee, which is an advisory committee appointed by your board, which is intended and designed to represent the various districts and also the cannabis cultivation community. Uh, they were included in that design process. We will include them again in creating a rubric and scoring system for the $800,000.
And what is the amount of the grants going to be awarded?
That has not yet been determined. However, if we were to follow suit with the existing micro grant program, it would be $10,000 for individual requests, up to $50,000 if there is a collaborative effort amongst multiple cultivators who are asking for funds. Uh, it's important to note, however, that we can fund numerous requests, even if we were to cap it at $10,000. That doesn't necessarily preclude a cultivator from submitting several $10,000 requests.
What would be the criteria that, um, so this, this amount is to basically help the failing cannabis industry? Is that the intent?
That's correct. That's why we're, uh, and, and for in particular cultivators, that's why, uh, the 800,000 would be aimed specifically at cultivators. Whereas the regular project trellis micro grant program is aimed at all cannabis businesses. Uh, this would be for cultivators solely, and it would be specifically tied to, um, issues really beyond the cultivator's control. So crop loss, fire mitigation, uh, drought circumstances, uh, creating defensible space because of fire threat uh, or adverse marketplace conditions which are affecting solvency because of the recent drop in cannabis prices.
So a criteria, um, when you're looking at, um, accepting someone, there could a criteria be that it costs me $550 to produce a pound and I got 400 a pound for my product? And that would be proof that they're losing financially. Is that something that you would, you know, consider? Because that is the basis of a lot of what's going on right now.
Yeah. So typically, with other programs, uh, we don't replace lost revenue, but we will support activities and expenditures which are designed to help, uh, increase revenue for the applicants or to reduce other costs so that the margin of revenue increases. Uh, because this today is just essentially allocating a budgetary amount uh, for this purpose, there's still work that needs to be done in order to really refine and define what exactly this $800,000, uh, cultivator relief program could look like. Uh, when we take that back to the project trellis committee, those project trellis meetings are public meetings and subject to the Brown Act. Uh, so there will be opportunity for cultivators, members of the public to come and provide their input and also to provide their input during the regularly and reoccurring scheduled meetings that we have with the cannabis community. So you do bring up, uh, some valid points about, uh, if we get into the details or into the weeds, how do we define and create some of those, the eligibility criteria? This is intended to aid and support and assist the cultivation community. We, we don't want it to be overly difficult or complicated. Uh, there are already challenges in getting funding out the door, uh, to the community quickly. So we will definitely work with, uh, our local stakeholders and other department heads and, um, county council and other subject matter experts to ensure that we create a program where the eligibility criteria is sufficient enough, but not overly exclusionary.
When you say local stakeholders, what does that, what group does that entail?
That would be from the cultivation community who is paying the Measure S, which funds these, this program.
So it would be not, it would be inclusive of all that want to participate in that discussion?
Absolutely.
Um, so when you, um, the $200,000 for marketing, how, um, would that criteria also be set up for, through the trellis committee?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would.
And when is the next Trellis Committee meeting?
October sixth.
So if, if approved today, then it would be your intent to get that criteria out then? And start that and be able to have that process go quickly?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Before we go to public comment, Supervisor Bushnell?
Sorry, I just had one more thought. So if the funds weren't, aren't, I mean, this is not, it could happen, so I just want to ask. So say the eight hundred thousand dollars isn't utilized. First of all, is there a timeframe on it that it has to be utilized by? No, Peggy says no.
No, there is no set timer.
So you will just take, keep taking applications till it is utilized in full?
Correct. I imagine that the funds would be obligated relatively quickly. Now, the way that this would, the mechanics of this would be that your board is adding this to our existing budget, so it's going into our fiscal year budget for the program. So we certainly would have to expend the funds by the next fiscal year. Otherwise, we'd have to bring an item to your board to extend the use of those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I think, I think it was with CIO Hayes. I was discussing Ann, Ann Scott Darrow. We might, we may actually have to do some neighborhood quote unquote area meetings, both up, you know, Willow Creek for the fifth. Just, just for the different areas, I'd like to see something out and explain to people because you understand anytime you fill out a form, anything you do for government, it becomes daunting for some people. And the assistance of getting, we found that out, getting, going the legal process. You know, Humboldt County, as it states, we own twenty percent of the state licensees. But Lake County and Santa Barbara and everything else is, are, are killing us on scale. So these are, so I think maybe we should start, you know, I, I've kind of set a predetermined date to maybe we can get out into the, the Grange or something out in the Honeydew, Metoll area, just, just to get some people together so they know what's going on and give them a chance for the people that are interested, just to, you know, pick me up. And then the other, the only other thing I have is that I really don't know what we can do for two hundred thousand dollars. I think that's been asked by a lot of people. I mean, I don't, it, it just this late, this, my, that, that, it'd probably be better putting that back into the grant program and getting people into next year and keeping them viable. I mean, just, I, I don't think we're going to get a lot, a lot of shelf. A lot of shelf, a lot of guys have done a lot of the pre, the pre-marketing for themselves, especially the branded people, so. The other thing is, is when we voted back to do the advertising campaign back in November, I think it was, or October, whenever it was, almost a year ago now. We, we, we said we were going to pick a local nonprofit, a Humboldt-based nonprofit that understood. Now, are we, are we going outside of that, what we voted on? Are we overriding that? Is that something, I, I'm not I'm not a big fan of having a big firm come in and send somebody up every two weeks to talk to everybody and say, yeah, we can do that, not. So I, I just the, the people that are born and bred into it probably could market it the best, maybe, maybe not, I don't know. The only thing we do have, we have a we do have a, a stronger name, it seems like, out there, so. Because I, from what I understand, nobody goes into a dispensary and asks, hey, do you have anything from Lake County? So I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if, if that's something we've changed, Scott.
I can provide a response to the chair, however, I have noticed that CIO Hayes has had her hand up.
Yeah, your hand kind of got lost in the corner in the wall on that video, Alicia.
Thank you Chair Bass. Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Supervisor Bone's first set of that commentary regarding a bit of an educational campaign. The Project Trellis team is working to establish, you know, a bit of a roadshow where they will go around the community and make themselves available to the cultivation community to provide them information on funding sources available to them, regulatory processes, you know, a roundabout presentation to help inform the cultivation community of the resources available to them and mechanisms for coming into compliance with a legal regulatory market. The Project Trellis team is also looking to establish a regularly occurring meeting time in each supervisor's district where they can be available one day a month or, or one day every other week to the cultivation community to help navigate some of the regulations that are placed on that business sector.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone did that.
Yeah, that was great. I, and I appreciate that, just I think, you know, we, we did this oh, seven or eight years ago for the, for the redwood industry. I think it was decking and we, we underwrote and it was redwood decking and fencing sales went up something like two hundred eighty, three hundred percent long, not long after Corbell shut its mill down, but it was able, their timber, their, their log sales, Green Diamond went up. So I mean, and Humboldt Redwood and companies that employ a lot of local people benefited from it. So investing in our, our local businesses is not something new. It's something new along these lines, but I just and when we talk about employment and, and, and cash to the market, I get a lot of mainstream businesses saying, what are you going to do? So.
Right.
That works.
I saw Director Hayes, your hand is, I mean, Director, CIO Hayes, your hand is still up? Nope, now it's down. All right, Supervisor Madron?
Thank you Chair. I agree with Supervisor Bone that I really think having a local nonprofit that's deeply steeped in our industry is ultimately going to be the best. But I understand the desire to see some competitive proposals in terms of price and all those kinds of things, so I do support that. I actually think this industry is so much on its heels right now that I'd be supportive of a lot more than eight hundred thousand dollars because it's not going to go very far when we think about all the various small farmers that are really up against the wall with the price drop on the product and everything. In a couple of years, hopefully with federal legalization, a lot of this stuff will change. And so really, I think what we're trying to do is hold things together in the interim to make it to that, that place, that finishing line, so to speak. And so I actually would support a couple of million dollars because frankly, if we don't do something like this, we're going to lose millions of dollars in tax revenues starting in one year. People are not going to be able to pay their taxes. And so, you know, it's one of those situations that if we don't spend this money, we're not going to have money coming in. It's just that simple. And so I actually would support more like two million dollars rather than eight hundred thousand because I think that extra money is money extremely well spent to help support this industry in what I would call the birthing process and get it to, you know, through the first five here, so to speak, right? But I think we need to add staff too, and I don't see anything in here about funding for staff. And I, I really want to add staff to this program because if we're going to continue to add more grant programs and more outreach and all these different things, I know that staff are already working like crazy to try and do what they're already doing. So I want to see some staff requests so that we can really gear up to, to manage this and get all this done timely and, and move it forward. Then the other thing is, I see Director Bartholomew is on here, the tax collector, and and I'd like for him to maybe provide us with some information. I'm hoping that there is a program that can provide people with a payment plan on their taxes because if they end up in arrears on their taxes and then they lose their local license, there goes the state license, everything unravels once again. You know, so perhaps Director Bartholomew can, can speak to that. But those are the, some of the things that I'm thinking about here that we need to do. I think this is urgent. We need to get this money out on the ground like yesterday and, and be working with this industry like we did with the timber industry on the marketing of the wood. I thought that was a great example that Supervisor Bone provided. So those are some of my initial, initial thoughts here, so.
Great, thank you Supervisor Madron and Judge Tax Collector Bartholomew. Good to see you.
Thank you Chair Bass. And to, in answer to you Supervisor Madron regarding excise taxes that are due, I am happy to work with taxpayers in whatever way your board directs. We could take installment payments if that is the direction. And we could also waive penalties for a period of time to a date certain that if they pay them by then, then the penalties will not apply, thereby giving them additional time to come up with the needed funds to meet their obligation. And that would actually be a simpler process for staff in this office because right now we do not have a, a procedure for installment plans. And so it'd be, it can be, it'd be much more complicated to keep track of all the various installment payments that may be requested. And if, we would also need to coordinate that with the Planning and Building Department because they give direction to this office for what bills to collect, to bill and collect. And but we're happy to work with the cultivators and by direction of your board in whatever way is feasible for us. So thank you for the question.
And thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. I have a couple of questions for John. So what date are the excise taxes due? October what?
The second installment for the current year and all future years, kind of think of it, is October fifteenth. So we have collected the first installment, which was due March fifteenth, and then the second installment is October fifteenth. And so
The 2020 year, correct?
That is correct. We always bill and collect in arrears, so we're collecting for the 2020 year at present.
Okay. So if you, if we were to do an extension with no penalties, what would that look like? Because the excise tax due for next year would be in May? Is it in May?
We will bill for the 2021 year in January with the first installment due March fifteenth.
March. So if we were to push this excise tax, say there's no penalties, would you, would your suggestion be due on a date of? Or, because then you're going to run into two that are due.
No matter what is decided upon, and this gets more complicated because we've had a number of discussions about how we could address the industry, and I'm not going to go into them without the group that was that was involved chiming in also. But the Treasury Tax Collector has discretion for waiving penalties. And, but what I would request from your board is a date certain that they would need to be paid by. That way it is simpler to follow. And if there's certain prerequisites for waiving penalties, I'm more than happy to take direction in that area also. I just need to know the specifics that your board would like to address relative to the industry. And as I already mentioned, we are directed by the Planning and Building Department for what to bill and collect, so they would need to be involved in the process.
So this, I'm sure is outside of this agenda item, so I
Actually, I'd like to ask the county council before we continue along a line. I just was feeling it could be going too far, but yes. County Council of Kingsley?
Chair, I was going to comment. I, the excise tax is fine for discussion as long as it's related to Project Trellis. But if we're talking about actual changes to the excise tax, I think that's beyond the scope of this meeting and members of the public wouldn't know that that was going to be a discussion where they could give their input.
Okay, thank you, that reminder. Supervisor Bushnell, you?
So I was curious to ask if, along those lines, with trying to get relief through Project Trellis, if there would be an agenda item coming forward? I see Alicia come on.
Yeah. CIO Hayes?
Through the chair, yes, we, we can certainly explore other opportunities for relief, including modifications to the current tax billing cycles and return to your board with recommendations.
Thank you. So through the, the Trellis program and this eight hundred thousand dollar grant, is there an opportunity for an applicant to say divert those funds to pay my excise? Scott?
Yes.
That, that could be a potential use of the funding, yes.
And would you, would that be, have to come through your Trellis Committee as a proponent of that eight hundred thousand?
We will add that to the list of recommendations for review and we will bring that to our trials committee on the sixth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any of the supervisors before we go to public comment? All right, well, we have a public comment on this item then. And if you want to comment on this item, please press star nine to raise your hand. I see a couple going up. And press star nine as soon as you get the opportunity, so we don't lose you accidentally in a time delay, which happens. Okay, so we have a few different folks. The first hand I, on my screen is seven four five four. And so let's go to extend mute.
Very interesting topic. You folks went astray on the excise tax. Can you hear me, Virginia?
Yes, thank you County Ken.
And so I, I would like to chime in for everybody else in the county who's lost their business, lost their property, lost their livelihood, that they get equal treatment regarding their property tax in any form of tax that we have to pay that goes into the general fund. This is equity, it's called. And everybody thinks they're special, but this is something that probably would end up in a judicial process just because of favoritism. So that's something you should take into effect, anything extended to any particular business should be extended to all businesses that are falling under the COVID situation and/or market situations. I would hope that if you do have any kind of funding you go, that only people who actually have their taxes current could be allowed to apply for this. Otherwise, it's a great idea, you go ahead and put the, take the money from one fund and you put it right back in the fund. That's an interesting one. Personally, I don't think you're going to see the money coming in. I don't, the question that wasn't asked by you folks, and you may wish to ask John, was what was the percentage of payment? How much did you actually receive? How many people didn't pay that first round of the excise tax? I don't think you're going to be getting a year from now anything from the excise tax. It's something very liberal. Are you listening to the facts and figures? And I've heard it's down around three hundred a pound and it's even dropping from there. And yet, for some reason, you feel by propping up these people, which I feel very sorry for, all the especially small growers, if you're going to give a benefit to anybody, why don't you give it to the people ten thousand square foot or less? And let the big boys go ahead and float their own thing because those small people are the ones who've been thrown under the bus, as far as I'm concerned. Make sure that some big person who possibly can afford to stay afloat for a year or two before they go under aren't receiving benefits from that. As far as I'm concerned, this is, this is kind of a, I, I strongly support you giving Project Trellis money for remediation for people getting out of the business. Let them clean up their sites before they go. That will enable those people to go on with their lives and have a place to live. That might be a criteria or something, not just call over to not this, but to actually clean up and remediate them as they get out of business because that's the direction it's headed. I, I don't, are you, are you reading your staff report and the numbers in there and just pretending those are not relevant? Maybe someone's way smarter than me and they say, it's going to come back in a year or two. I have not heard anybody say that they think it's going to come back in a year or two. This is kind of yet, as it makes its way, work its way through the process. So I hate to be so negative on this, but let's take a positive viewpoint and allow the environment to be cleaned up with this money also as people move on to other businesses. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And our next speaker has the last four digits of seven four two nine. And if that's you, press star six and mute and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. I appreciate this conversation because I know that my neighbors and my family members that have small farms are, are struggling. And so I do appreciate this, but I'm confused about why this conversation doesn't include a revisit to some type of moratorium on new permits. The Planning Commission continues to permit large grows, not small grows, new growths, not existing growths. And many of these are with out of county owners, not locals. So I feel that it's good to have the conversation about relief, but the county, the same county who's talking about relief is also continuing to permit large new growths. And that's, that's just very confusing to me why we would care so much, but not continue to flood the market with these big growths. And, and, and I really want to emphasize, these are new growths. They're not existing. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So and the next hand we have up is five seven nine eight. And no other hands are up. So if you're planning on talking, please press star six, I mean star nine, so we know you want to talk. All right, five seven nine eight, welcome. I see you are unmuted.
Good morning supervisors. Thank you for hearing this important staff report and thank you for staff working diligently, listening to the cultivators. My name is Hannah White. I cultivate cannabis out here in Willow Creek. Yeah, I think this is a, a great place to start. Thank you Rex, thank you Michelle, thank you Steve for hearing us and hearing the things that we've been saying to supervisors. $800,000 extra into micro grant programs, I think would be great. And yeah, if it was more like how amazing, yeah Rex, I agree with you, $200,000 right now to market this crop this year and for the future is, is nothing. We've, we've already spent similar funds over the last three years with Southern Humble Business Visitors Bureau. They have a contract. This past weekend, they spent on the measure S, already paid cultivator dime a weekend at the PGA Golf Tour in Napa County. They, they got that money two months from an invoice. And I know so many cultivators who were waiting still four months later for the second round of already awarded but unfunded projects. Kent is confused. This isn't money that we're looking to come in. This is already money that's been paid. We already paid this. Thank you, thank you for this project, but let's get going faster. We need to have this grant money awarded quickly so that when we say, yeah, we're going to fund your $10,000 for this culvert, that we can get that work done in this limited period of time that we have to do it. Time is running out. Measure S goes into the public pot. Measure Z is money that the voters voted for. It has an oversight committee. Measure S has no oversight committee. There was almost $800,000 taken out last year for COVID. So is this just us getting our $800,000 back or, you know, but this money we have already paid it. So if there's any way that you guys can help bolster the small farmers and ease the pain over this time, yeah, Kent's right, Mark, it's not going to change in one or two years. And that's not your job to do that work for us, but we need some help. Call small cultivators and humble need help. And yeah, that's it. Please, my ask is we need a measure S tax oversight committee. We need to see where these monies have gone, how they're improving our community, how they're, where the actual 10% is coming back to cultivators. Like, let's do the numbers, please, and thank you so much.
And thank you Hannah. And the next speaker is seven one zero eight. If that's you. And just a reminder to everyone, we do have an 11 o'clock time set. So obviously we're not going to make it, but it's just something to keep aware of as we try to move forward here. All right, so if you are seven one zero eight, it is your turn. Welcome.
Yes, this is Bonnie Blackberry and I support the Trellis program. I think it's really needed. And I support the small growers, not these large growths. Seems like the big problem now is overproduction. Everybody agrees that's the problem. So why on earth is Humboldt County permitting new growths when there's already a problem? And are these new growths, then they're going to be eligible? And I feel like with the overproduction in these, big growths are hurting the existing people. So when you expand and with new areas and now it's the mixed light, which isn't a whole lot different than what's going on in other counties like Santa Barbara and stuff. So trying to save the craft instead of just going for the bulk, I feel like every one of these new growths is just sinking the boat for the existing people that are trying to get by. So I would hope you'd make some differentiation between the new ones because it's like, okay, we'll put in a new one acre, three cycles of mixed light and then we're going to support that when we already have an overproduction. So those are my comments. I think focusing on the 10,000 square feet and under would be really great for the county and the community. Thank you.
Thank you Bonnie. All right, and nine four nine three. Now press star six and mute and you have your three minutes. Welcome.
Hello, this is Dylan Matoll calling from Honeydew. And I had a couple of comments and questions. One, my, my, one thought about the additional potential funding for Trellis is that, you know, there were a lot of grant applications submitted, which were, which were great applications, but didn't make the cut. And so I think that when we talk about what could we do with that $800,000, there's one quick answer right there is that we could go back and fund more of the applications which have already been submitted and county staff already has those applications and the applicant's information and what they want to do with it. And so I think that would be a, a quick way to get some funds out and to directly to cultivators. And I'm still not clear following staff's report on the Trellis grants that haven't been funded, what exactly the, the procedural holdup is there? Because when I read the staff for the agenda item, it made it sound like there was just a couple of unfunded, but then Scott mentioned 66. So if we could get more information on if there's something in the administrative side that's holding up funding these, how can we fix that? And third and final comment is Rex asked a question and I didn't hear an answer to it is in November 2020, the Board of Supervisors approved directing staff to limit the RFP for marketing to Humboldt County based nonprofits. And is that still the case or has, has that policy or that directive from the Board of Supervisors been changed? So those are my questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you Dylan. All right, there's no more hands up, so we'll return to the board on this. And I have a question, all our supervisors, Bushnell, will you go present your hands up?
You can go ahead Chair Bass.
Thank you. This, I, I've been thinking about what Dylan said and actually then he said, so procedurally, whether it's the ones that are kind of held up now or in the future, can we be looking at a different way to move funds in the future? I mean, is there a way that those dollars could be put in something like REDAC or some organization that would actually end up being the final person who, you know, I don't know if there's another way to try to help facilitate moving us faster in the future. And so I just wanted to, you know, put that in some base thinkers, like is there something that we can do that, that would work? And I don't know. So just, just a thought. Supervisor Bushnell, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. I have a few questions. So first of all, Alicia, I wanted to ask you the specific holdup with the funds. Do we know what that is?
I, I would, I would defer to Scott's team who's been communicating with the Auditor Controller's Office on the requirements or the, what's necessary in order to get these funds out the door? I would venture to say it's probably a multitude of different hangups, one of which being their ability to, to timely process.
So can I just ask then that is in the AC's hand right currently and we're waiting on, that's where the money's waiting to be distributed? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. And then my second comment would be that to the public commenters, I understand that, that, you know, the market's failing, so we should stop processing permits. But who to say, who to, who are we to say that you don't have the opportunity to apply? And just because the market's failing, you're done? And then also I want, is Director Ford here?
I would think he probably is.
Yeah. So I wanted to ask Director Ford, with Supervisor Madrona, myself, we have had lots of discussions through the ad hoc committee and I think probably we're getting ready to address a lot of this stuff coming forward. Can you correct me or not?
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell, that is correct. I apologize. I intended to have the report on today's agenda. I was not able to do that. So the report will be coming forth on October 5th. Part of that will address conversations as reflected by Treasury Tax Collector Bartholomew about being able to extend tax payments. The discussion was till May and that would have included the first round of taxes in 2022 for the 2021 tax year. And the rationale behind that is to give people the opportunity to get through at least another harvest, given how bad this year has been, at least an early harvest. It is early. But so, so that and, and other things that are going to be the recommendation from the ad hoc committee will be coming forward to try to assist the cannabis community. Some of that will be further addressing the legislative platform on some of the things that were brought up by members of the community.
Thank you for that Director Ford. My other question that I have is from public comment about just processing. You already have a bunch of applications, but is the, I wanted to know, is, is the intent of this $800,000, the criteria could possibly be different? And that question is for Scott.
Saw someone in Peggy's office shaking their head too.
I saw, yeah, Logan. Hey Logan.
I, I wasn't sure if that was for me or for Director Ford. The, our, I alluded in my opening comments for this agenda item of that there is an MOU that exists between planning and development in our agency. We each understand that we have respective different roles concerning the cannabis community and we bring different things to the table. We've had discussion about Trellis being used historically to pay for regulatory compliance when Trellis was also intended to provide just general business support because the cannabis community doesn't have access to programs like SBA or SBDC because those are federally funded. However, Trellis has been somewhat limited in providing that type of support to the cannabis community because now it's been used as a stopgap to address expenditures related to mandatory compliance. So Director Ford and I and our teams, we've talked about how to strategize on other grant opportunities that could come from the planning and building side of the house, which can provide more relief on the, the compliance and regulatory side so that Trellis can focus on some of the other more business support and advocacy measures and also equity measures and support for the cannabis community. So that's all something that's still presently being worked out and we're actually working together, our two departments, our teams, on a joint item that we're going to bring to your board in the future to, to delve into that in a little, little bit more detail.
Thank you. My last question is for Alicia. So it would be quite difficult to have a different housing agency for this, these funds or is that a true statement or not? As someone had said, like, I think it was Virginia, right?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, it certainly is more streamlined to get these funds out of the door through our office. There would be contracting requirements that would need to be in place before we were able to do that. And then even getting those funds, you know, we still got to get the funds out of our door one way or the other. So that, that would not be preferential, given the urgency behind these, the need to get these funds infused into the community.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Well, I just want to make a stab at a motion, but I don't know. So I wanted to recommend staff's recommendation, although I, I don't want to be specific with the $200,000 for marketing. And I think maybe I need to hear Steve before I make the motion.
Thank you Supervisor Madrona.
Oh, well, if you'd like Supervisor Bushnell, I can go ahead. I've been taking a lot of notes here. I can make a stab at the motion if that's okay for you.
Sure.
Okay. Lots, lots discussed here today. I think it's been a really good discussion. Appreciate, appreciate the public comments. And so I'm going to try and take a stab at what I've heard here today and what I think the board might support. But of course, we'll see how that pans out. And that would be to support staff recommendations listed on our, on our agenda item, but with a couple of modifications. First, as Scott mentioned, his director, as he mentioned, we would eliminate item number four and one, four and five under recommendation number one. Those would just be taken off the list because those are coming back to us in two weeks via planning and building, working with economic development. The second thing is I think there was a great point made that $800,000 was pulled back from Project Trellis due to COVID. So I think it would be appropriate, if we're really trying to provide emergency funds, let's make that 1.6 million, bring back the 800,000 that was previously removed and add another 800,000. I also thought it was a great recommendation by one of the speakers about, we already have a bunch of grant proposals that came in that were not able to be funded because we didn't have enough money. That would certainly be one way to try and bring this forward quicker. So I'll clean this motion up after I explain a couple of things because.
Good, thank you.
Questions shouldn't have a bunch of discussion in there. My apologies. Just trying to explain where I'm thinking. And then under recommendation number one, I agree, I don't think an emergency marketing thing is going to do much right now. So items number two and three could be removed if that was agreeable with the board. I do want to continue to support whatever marketing plan we do being done by a local nonprofit. And I do recognize that may very well reduce the competition, but I don't want to have increased competition if it means going with some firm from outside that doesn't really understand our community. But I also want to make sure that whatever proposal comes in or proposals, that they're competitive. So that seems to be an important element. I'm going to hold off on the whole tax installment thing because it sounds like John Ford and John Bartholomew will be coming back to us in two weeks with some possible tax installment or penalty waivers and things like that. And I thought that was a great comment by one of the speakers about, well, there are other businesses out there due to COVID that are also struggling probably with property taxes and things. So how do we set up some equitable thing where if you can show that you had some difficulties due to COVID or whatever, that you might be able to qualify for that? And then I also would like to ultimately see staff come back in two weeks at our next board meeting with a request for increased staffing. We can't do that today. It's not on the agenda, but I would very much like to see staff come back. So let me clean that up. One other comment. let me clean that up. One other comment, you know, the moratorium on grows, I get it. It seems crazy. The market's oversupplied. Why would we continue to approve more? But the fact is, I mean, when we talk about equity, you know, even though it creates an oversupply to add more, how can we cut somebody off halfway when they've spent two or three years of their life savings trying to get into this market? And, and I know that creates difficulty, but frankly, I think the biggest part of oversupply is all these mega grows in other counties, as well as a tremendous amount of product coming in from Oregon and slipping into the metric market, which is not all that difficult to do. If you look at metric, it's quite simple really to make that happen. And that's a big part of the oversupply. Maybe federal legalization in two years or so will help solve some of that. So anyway, I've covered a number of items. So let me go back and clean up the motion, which would be to approve staff recommendation, recommendations with an elimination of item number four and five from recommendation number one. And increasing recommendation number ones, number one from 800,000 to 1.6 million. And that would be it. I think it's that simple really. There was a bunch of other comments, but most of those I think will be dealt with in two weeks. So.
So we have a motion. Thank you for clarifying it. And do you have a second to that?
I have a question.
Okay. So we don't have a second yet Supervisor Wilson, did you want a second? Or was it?
No, no, I didn't have a, I have a concern about the increase.
I, I have a comment. So I, I wanted to ask Alicia with that increase, what that looks like for us. And then also I wanted to ask Supervisor Madrona that the the $200,000, I wanted it to be, if possible, if we don't do that marketing, that it just be moved into that category of the Trellis funds. To, that, that, that is, that, that could be, you know, if it doesn't get utilized, then it just goes into that 800, to grow that 800,000 pot to a million.
Yeah, I would be agreeable to that. So we'd make it 1 million. And if there's not support for the 1.6 million, I understand that. I mean, budgets are budgets and all that. So so let me amend my motion to make.
Well, could I have, can I have Alicia answer my question first?
Please.
Thank you.
Alicia.
Yes, this, this $1 million is coming from the general fund. It was originally funds that would have been allocated to Project Trellis, but were held back in response to COVID. So these are dollars that have been accounted for in the general fund and does have an impact on the general fund. Increasing that by any amount would, would be an additional impact to the general fund. It would come from fund balance. I, I am confident that we have the fund balance there and available for this purpose, but allocating the dollars to Project Trellis takes dollars that maybe your board would want to allocate in other areas or utilize for future budgeting spending plans. So that would be my advice is to consider that impact.
Okay. So then I'll go back to Supervisor Madrona.
So thank you, CIO. So just to be clear, the 800,000 and the 200,000 are actually within the boundaries of the 10% of Measure S that this board already approved quite some time ago. So none of that is going above and beyond what we already approved last year. So just want to be clear about that. If we went to the 1.6 million that I suggested, that would take us beyond the 10% and I understand the impact on the general fund. So I would amend my motion to just simply make it 100,000 to Project Trellis by taking the 200,000 from the marketing and move it into the Trellis grant.
And 1 million?
1 million. It's 800,000 plus 200,000.
Yeah.
Which is already something we approved as part of a 10% package last year. So hopefully that clarifies and makes it somewhat supportable.
Let's see, is there a second?
No.
No?
Say the motion again, please.
I've got a question.
Well, okay, I'm just trying to find out, we have a motion on the floor, but I mean, we're trying to find out if there's a second Supervisor Madrona, do you mind if we ask Supervisor, let Supervisor Bone mention his question and then we can restate. Okay, just want to make sure.
Well, and I, I understand when we, when we do find this elusive local nonprofit that's going to market this. And I mean, I think we're basically handing them the ball and saying, hey, go take care of this for us. Do we need to add staffing to oversee them or should we be giving them the money to do the job at hand? And that is to market and find ways of efficiency or help with ways of efficiency and let the people that are in involved in the situation, basically the local nonprofit or whoever it may be, to take that ball and run with it instead of adding more staff to us, actually put it on the ground running. And, and that's not to overload our staff. If, if it's going to take more people to oversee this, this group that's going to handle our marketing and stuff, then I guess that will change. But I can see if we, if we do this, if we come up with a way to do payment plans, John Bartholomew is going to meet more people because that's going to be time sensitive. I mean, that's the, the call of the land is everybody needs more staffing to do anything. So I'm, I'm just saying, do we actually need more staffing over there? They haven't asked for it. Or does that, would that be directed in more staffing and the people that are going to actually market or market the product and get it out there? Just a question. I just, I don't know the answer to that. You guys are so well versed on this.
Alicia, did you?
Yes, through the chair. Our, our office is well versed on doing more with less and, and we take your board's direction often and implement policies with the staffing we have. So we will certainly take this and run with it and make it successful as we are well adept at doing. That being said, roadshow campaign, having staff who are going out into the community on a regularly occurring basis to, to meet with your districts regarding cultivation, the mass amounts of funding that are coming through Project Trellis, both from your board and through the state and the heavy administrative component that this program entails. We would certainly welcome with open arms, an additional staff member. And that could be a, a staff member that is extra help while we monitor the workload and see what the long-term impacts to any expansion on this program may entail.
Okay Supervisor Madrona, would you like to take that stab again in your motion? I mean, we had a motion and I don't, I think then I was asked if there was a second.
Okay, I'll, I'll make another, I'll make another stab at it if that's okay through the chair.
Please.
So basically it is to approve staff recommendations with a couple of minor, minor modifications. Under recommendation number one, the $800,000 listed in item number one would become 1 million. Item number two and three would be eliminated under recommendation number one, because that 200,000 would be moved into the Project Trellis grants under item number one. Item number four and five would go away, as was mentioned by Director Adair at the very beginning of the presentation. That's item number four and five under recommendation number one, trying to be very clear here. So that's basically it, along with directing staff or the CIO to come back to us with a staff request for one additional member, whether that's extra help or whatever at our October 4th meeting, because I do believe that staff are already trying to manage a huge amount of work and it affects the timeline on getting these things out to the community. And so I think, given what we already have on the plate and what other funding is coming down from the state, because we were smart enough to get involved in equity right out of the gate, I think that extra staff member would go a long way in helping us to, to do this. So that was just commentary on the end of my motion.
Thank you. Let's, I see Tracy has her hand up. So let's make sure she's, I think she's captured the the motion that you would like to actually make and make sure that she's thinking the same thing.
Thank you. I would just like to clarify Supervisor Madrona, the extra staff, where would that be? That staff member be for? Would it be economic development? CIO, where were you?
Alicia's nodding her head to economic development. So I don't know, Steve.
Yes, yes. That was for economic development.
Okay, thank you.
Primarily, primarily focused on the Trellis and cannabis programs that economic development is engaged in. That was all commentary. So it's really a pretty simple motion with the addition of staff.
Tracy, would you like to state what you believe you heard? So we make sure, and then we'll see if we've got a second to that. I just want to make sure that we, we've got it all boiled down to what you.
So the motion would be to approve staff recommendations with the modification to recommendation number one, which would eliminate items two and three. The $200,000 from item two would be moved to item one to make $1 million. And then to remove items four and five from recommendation number one and direct staff to return in two weeks with an additional agenda item recommending one additional staff member for the ECTV Project Trellis workload.
Okay, is there a second now?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Wilson, did you want to say anything? You've been.
No, I don't. I, I think this has been deliberated as well as it can be.
All right. Anyone else wish to make comments from the board? Seeing then Tracy and thank you Tracy for working to get that boiled down. Please do a roll call vote.
Sure Supervisor Bone.
Yeah.
Supervisor Madrona?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah.
Bass is 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks everyone for sticking with us here. And we do have that 11 o'clock time set that I think we should probably go to. So I would like to ask County Council, Billingsley to brief us before we go into closed session.
Thank you Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 and 7.6 to meet with the county's negotiators Kelly Barnes, Alicia Hayes and Jack Hughes and instruct their designated negotiators for the various employee organizations and groups listed in the agenda.
Okay. You know, after I've said that to you, I do want to ask if we still have the Treasury Tax Collector on here. John, how long do you think your item would be? I'm trying to figure out if there's something else we can. Oh, we just better stick with what we got. Okay. Sorry, John. You're going to have to come back when we come back. Thank you. All right. So thank you Jefferson for briefing us and I will see if there is anyone from the public who wants to comment on closed session. We have 7454. Welcome.
So as you're going in to negotiate with your employees, I don't know. There's been mentioned by the, I think some of the sheriff's department people that they would like to see Measure Z brought back. And, and your negotiations are, you know, dependent upon, you know, all these things that you can offer to these people, possibly in lieu of money. And I mentioned earlier, and I've spoken with law enforcement and other departments, for you to facilitate the housing for these people, for you to facilitate other things are all negotiating points with your employees. For those who do not watch the international thing and where your money will be coming from, if any at all, it looks like China's on the verge of the dominoes falling. As those dominoes fall, your money falls eventually. And there isn't money available for any employee increase, let alone to pay a lot of your employees. I don't know whether you're a negotiator for those people are aware of what the economic situation is and how dire it is. On all news stations now, everybody's admitting it's dire. And when you go into negotiations, I hope your employees will understand that there'll be many people just lucky to have any job at all in the future. That's just what some people prophesy. So maybe that point gets made. As far as increases, other than just increases due to inflation, I see no reason to, to increase funds. I think there's necess, it's necessary for your departments or people to show the ability to create more money coming into the copper through either providing a, a more friendly business environment where we have higher taxes or have more, more revenue coming in, not higher taxes, but more revenue. And it's pretty much should be, what, what can you folks bring to the table that can increase the honey pot here so that we can continue to function as a government? And I think that's imperative that, that that's part of a negotiation with any employee. What, what, what are the services you can provide that make you worth more than you're worth right now? I guess we have one other topic to deal with here. So I, I will let those, my comments go with your employee negotiation. Just so that the public knows, your, your county council did not read those people in there. For people who don't have access to the agenda, it's a good share of the public employees from different levels of the government. I think Afsmi's in there. And I think that should have been read into the record as far as who is negotiating, but that's just my angst with lack of clarity and, and transparency. Thank you Roberty for speaking on your closed session today.
All right, thank you. I did want to ask County Council or Alicia, how long do we expect this closed session to last? I know it's hard to guess.
I believe it, it's going to be pretty brief, maybe 15, 20 minutes.
Okay, so what I suggest is we take a brief five minute break because I know there's a few people that would need a quick five minute break. And then we can, I would just actually say we could come back later in the afternoon to take on the rest of them. I, you know, the rest of the agenda. Director, I mean, keep trying to change your title today, CIO Hayes.
We do have an attorney on the hook for closed session. So if we could go into closed session.
I said a five minute break. I mean, literally a bathroom break. There's people that I'm getting text messages from. We need a five minute break.
Gotcha.
Okay. Especially when you're stuck on camera the whole time. So, all right. So we'll, we'll meet back and we'll come back. I, I'm not going to guarantee you a time. We'll come back this afternoon for the items because I just really don't know what to guess at this point. Because I want people to have lunch. So unless, come back at 1:30? Does that sound okay so that we actually get a lunch?
Is there that much to come back for?
There's one, there's the, there's one public hearing.
Yeah.
And it's, but I don't know how extensive we plan that to have. And then we have the tax collector item. So I don't mind coming back. I just wanted to see if we had a time. So if anyone wants to come in and watch the rest of the meeting, they know what to shoot for. So I don't, I don't, you know, let's just go in. And when we get done, we'll come back, we'll play it by ear after the, after the closed session, figure out if we're going to eat lunch or we're just going to come in and do it. Unless, you know, I don't really care when we do it. I'm, I'm here no matter what. So and I'm not hearing, I guess we do have Director Ford. Director Ford, how long do you think your planning, your public hearing will go if you had to take a stab at it?
Our presentation will be less than five minutes. I don't see that there's a lot of controversy with this. I would expect it to be done in less than 10.
Okay. So then let's, after we get into closed session, after a quick five minute break, we'll come back here just as when a closed session is done and finish it out. So that we'll be done with the day at that point. Is that okay? All right.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Thank you Director Ford for being there because sometimes I just never know when it says cannabis, if it's going to be short or long. All right. We will go back and see you guys in closed session.
Did you see Michelle next door? Wait, Michelle's there. Does Michelle need to be brought over too? Is she here? Michelle, you there? Thank you. All right.
So we will continue with our day. So we will continue with our day. I'd like to ask County Council if we have a report out of closed session.
Yes Chair, on item L1, there's no reportable action.
Right, thank you very much. So now we're gonna go on to our second departmental item, and this comes to us from the Treasure Tax Collector Bartholomew. And it's regarding adding CalPERS as an additional provider for the county, I believe, Deferred Comp Savings Plan. Welcome, Treasure Tax Collector.
Thank you Chair Bass, fellow supervisors and staff. I will be very brief with this item. I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of it, and people could ask questions if they have concerns, et cetera. I've been working on this, or thinking about it for about three years now, and I went out and I received requests for proposals from providers in 2019. But then with the ADP project and county payroll services kind of being flux, I did not want to impose additional work on them during that time period, and so I waited until now. And I believe that adding another provider at this time would be beneficial for employees in that they would have other options to participate in with the CalPERS plan. And they'd also have a local representative, which is really the strongest reason that I believe that we should add CalPERS as another 457 plan provider. And that is all I need to say right now, unless there are questions.
All right. That was fairly well explained in the staff report. Does any board member have a question with the Treasure Tax Collector? Doesn't look like questions, so let's go to public comment. And I gotta get the attendee list. We have one hand up, and that would be 7454, so we'll go to you, and welcome. Kent, I know you're there. Where'd you go? There you go, welcome.
I got second try there. You know, I support anything John does, he's, you know, really sharp at what he does. I don't quite understand, you know, you know, I was finally able to get this staff report up. Sometimes those are hard for us to pull up. But, you know, more options that you can give the people as far as their retirement, the better. Hopefully this gives them some latitude in the thing. I don't really have any faith at all in CalPERS, but anyway, if, 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 not when, but if, not if, but when that particular project fails, which could happen at any time, the whole CalPERS thing collapsed. I really wish there'd be other options for your employees to have their money completely separate from anything to do with CalPERS. That's just something I wish them to have the option of. I don't know if that's possible, but for me, that would be something to strive for. If this accomplishes anything in that direction, then kudos to John, as usual. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you Kent. And there are no other hands up, so we'll go back to the board. Is there someone interested in making a motion? Supervisor Madron, I'm making everybody a director apparently today, Supervisor Madron.
Through the chair, yes, I would move staff recommendations.
Is there a second? I will...
Second.
Okay, we've got a, I heard a second. Yes, John, I see your hand up.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt the vote. I just want to clarify something that Mr. Swawsky brought up.
You don't have to.
Well, I think it's important in this case, because all accounts are separate. They are owned by the participant or the employee. The company that is the record keeper or provider of those accounts has to keep them as separate accounts, they are owned by the employee. So there is no chance that a provider can assume funds nor heading a county. These are the employee funds set aside for their benefit. Thank you.
All right, thank you John for that clarification. So we do have a motion and a second. No other hands up, so Tracy, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Sure.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, passes 5-0.
All right, thank you and thank you John. So now we'll move on to the public hearing that we have today, and it comes to us from Planning and Building. And it's regarding draft amendments to the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing, and Director Ford, I'll give this to you. Probably to give to Michael, but...
Before we start, I would ask Council Billingsley, do we need to introduce this for reading?
Through the chair, the description is actually much longer than the actual title, so I should actually read the much shorter and less descriptive title into the record. Before your board is an ordinance amending section 314-55.4 of Chapter 4 of Division 1 of Title III of the Humboldt County Code, the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance.
Okay, yeah, that, thank you John, because usually Jefferson will tell me ahead of time if one of them requires that. Some don't anymore, but, all right.
Thank you Chair. We're trying to get to a point where that doesn't have to be done every time, but we're getting better. So this is really a fairly simple item. It involves two changes to the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance. Now, the first change is to address a direction that the board gave in response to stacking of RRRs, Retirement, Relocation, Restoration sites. And the second is to address a problem that we've experienced with support facilities for cannabis that are located in community areas, needing to comply with a 600-foot setback. In community areas, it's hard to place them and comply with that setback, since they're all enclosed. They don't really pose odor danger, visibility concern, or any real detriment to the community. So we're proposing to remove that. Mr. Richardson can give a much more detailed presentation on the language, if you would like, or we could answer questions.
All right. Any, the board, any board member want a longer presentation, or just, does anyone have questions for the director or for Michael? Not seeing any hands up yet. All right, well...
I have a question, Supervisor Chair, or Chair Bass, I have a question.
Where are you? Okay. Your hand's not up, but, but okay, I hear you. Yes, please.
Okay, I just was wondering, I mean, is this really going from 600 to zero? Or at the board's discretion, can we make that like a 100-foot setback or something like that? I just, I feel like maybe going from 600 to zero might be a bit much. So I was just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
The board could certainly choose to include a setback for cannabis support facilities. What we did was a little bit nuanced, is that we removed the reference to cannabis support facilities, which is a defined term in the ordinance, and just made it off-site processing enclosed nurseries and community propagation centers must meet or exceed the setbacks. Then the support facilities, which are largely all indoor, would not have setbacks. But if the board, and direct, answer your question, if the board would like to have a setback for cannabis support facilities, it would be easy to just add in a sentence saying that cannabis support facility shall adhere to a 100-foot setback from all sensitive receptors.
And I saw Supervisor Bushnell's hand up first, and then Supervisor Bone.
Rex can go.
Okay, Rex?
I'm just asking, John, standard building setbacks will still be in place, right? When you go zero?
And this does not affect any building setback, it does not affect either through the building code or through the zoning ordinance. This is only the 600-foot setback to sensitive receptors.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thanks. Through the Chair, Director Ford. If we don't put in a setback, can we, through discussion, if one, if it comes up, can we say, oh, you can't be within? Like, could it be discretionary? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Some of the cannabis support facilities are allowed by right through a zoning clearance certificate. And so if there's not a setback written in the ordinance, there wouldn't be a discretionary action to tag it to.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm fine, because you got the building setbacks already, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Director Ford? Or Michael?
This is, this is Mike, I mean, I just want to say, or Supervisor Wilson, I want to say that I I'm hesitant to go less than 100 feet within these special zones. I just, I can, I can see it coming already, the conflict and the angst that this might generate. So, and that's just my, that's where I'm at on it.
All right, thank you. Well, we will go out for public comment. And we have no hand, we have one hand up. All right, 7454. Welcome Kent.
So, you know, this setback that was based upon the sensory thing, I guess, which that would be the odor effect, has been relied upon by these communities to have that setback, not just for odor, but for other potential objections to these facilities. So I don't know whether, have you gotten buy-in from all these communities, or have you done outreach to all these communities and made them understand that what they felt they were protected from, they will potentially be not protected for by any feat at all? I strongly support at least some kind of setback here. But without a buy-in in those communities, yes, you're asking for, you're asking for a real hot mess here. And possibly nobody else will be making comment, and if they're not, it's probably because nobody else knows what's going on or paying attention to these things. There are other objections other than just sensory. I mean, some people just plain and simply don't want them in the neighborhood. Some of them consider it to be an attractive nuisance, such as for potential robbery, or just the people that they don't wish to have association with regarding this particular topic. That's why it was put there. So to reduce this, to reduce the 600-square-foot, 600-foot setback from the public lands, or functionally reduce it by just allowing everybody to go there, you're, you're kind of unwinding a lot of what the people felt was a protection. Highly recommend you table this particular topic, unless you've already reached out and have all of the people within these groups, the powers that be within these areas, have a buy-in on this. I was really pleased to see a whole bunch of the other stuff go away that was attached to this, such as ancillary and things of that nature. I'm not even sure whether the settlement you have with HUMMAP might not preclude you from making this change of this magnitude without doing an environmental impact study on this, or something further than you've already done. Possibly you have, but there seems to be a real problem with planning and building dodging environmental impact with things that are required, and that are also potentially part of litigation. You may wish to run this before your council and have him assure you that your chance of having having a need for an EIR that hasn't been done, if it hasn't, be in, and not put yourself at financial risk regarding litigation with the binding agreement between HUMMAP and the county. Not speaking for HUMMAP, thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go back to the board. Any supervisors have additional questions or interested in the motion? Supervisor Madron, and then Bushnell?
I think 100-foot minimum setback is reasonable. I don't think it would prevent pretty much anything from happening. So I'm supportive with 100 feet.
All right, thank you Supervisor Bushnell.
Hi, through the Chair, Director Ford, we did public outreach. Had lots of discussion about this.
This, we did not hold separate public meetings about this. We did obviously go through the Planning Commission on this, and it has been advertised, it has been discussed.
And it was, yeah, and there was quite a bit of discussion around it, and so, okay, thank you.
And could I clarify, just to make sure that everybody's aware, we are not talking about taking away any setbacks for cultivation. We're not talking about the setback between cultivation and public property. It's setback between cultivation and schools, setback cultivation and other sensitive receptors. This is strictly for cannabis support facilities, which again are largely indoor. Things that we do want on paved roads within community areas.
Right, thank you. Yes, Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I'm not using my hand thing very well here today. So hey, John, do you, with 100-foot setback, I mean, just in just sort of your 50,000-square-foot view, is that gonna, you know, is that gonna, is that gonna knock out like 80% of these things, or is, you know, you think that'll have a reasonable? Because I just want to make sure that, I still, I just, I still think that there are neighborhoods and neighbors that are gonna be, that are pretty sensitive to this. And I know that we say we can knock down all the smells, and I think for the most part, that's really true. I mean, we see that it's very, very well done. But there's a difference between 100 feet and 10 feet, no matter what it is. And so I, if we're, if you're not feeling like this is gonna be a major impact necessarily on on the developers, I mean, not developers, but on, on folks that are actually doing these businesses, and it gives more protection for the neighbors, and I, I think we're, I'm still okay with the 100 feet.
Through the Chair, 100 feet seems fine to us. One of the hardest ones that we dealt with, I think it was 550 feet away. And it was from a church, the local church body was fully willing to sign off on it. Just the episcopacy of the church wouldn't, so the, the facility couldn't go in an existing building.
Right. Thank you Supervisor Bushnell.
I'm sorry that was left up, and I don't have any questions.
All right, Supervisor Bone?
On, is this setback from property line or existing structure on the other property?
It would be from whatever the facility is to whatever the sensitive receptor is. So to a school or church, it would be to the property line of the school or the church. From probably, these would be from the building. So many times, there's a parking lot to get across and some other things before you get to, get to another facility. So 100 feet's highly, highly reasonable.
And it's not going in, and again, it's not going in, it can't be built in the residential. We can't have this type of facility in a residential area, and what is the minimum acreage?
Well, these are typically commercial industrial buildings within community plan areas. So that's, that's really what we're looking at, is, in fact, the CCLUO really wanted to incentivize moving community support facilities into centralized locations. If it would help the board, I would offer that this can be done with a very simple change to the text. In section 55.4.7, currently, it says all cannabis support facilities, that's all stricken. Remove the strikeout and say all cannabis support facilities shall maintain a minimum 100-foot setback to sensitive receptors as identified in 55.4.6, and that sequence, and then leave everything else like it is.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell, and then Madron.
John, when we do measuring, I know this came up, you know, a few months ago with you and I. Is it path of travel, is it air path? What's the measure? How do you measure?
It's as the crow flies.
So 100 feet, as the crow flies, and if you do path of travel, it could be down around the corner and not even in sight of the facility. This became an issue not so long ago, where, because it's not path of travel, and you couldn't even... long ago where, because it's not path of travel and you couldn't even see the facility.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Well, I was going to move staff recommendation with the modification that was outlined by Director Ford for the 100-foot setback.
Right.
I'll second that. And I just have another clarifying question for Director Ford through the Chair.
Okay.
It is, within this ordinance, is that, if there's a modification to that 100 feet that an applicant might want to do, could they negotiate that with a neighbor and, and move that along? Is there, is there a path to work that out?
Yes. Lower in that section, there is the ability to modify that setback if the, the party that's responsible for that is willing to agree to reduce setback.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the Chair. So I, I want to just give a scenario to the board. You have a church that is, I don't know, 80 feet from a facility, and they have no objection, but their church doesn't allow them to write a letter stating that it would be okay with them. They take no stance. This facility, and it's 150 feet by tra, path of travel down around the corner, now this facility, this support facility that we need so badly in our communities, can't do anything. Because this church, they don't have anybody that would grant that, even though they have no opposition to the facility. And, and this is a true scenario that we came up, that happened three months ago.
I have a question for, so Supervisor Bushnell, did you say that that one still would have not been able to happen with 100-foot setback?
I, I believe that the 100-foot setback would have been fine in this, in this, but the issue is the path of travel can be a long, long distance away. When you do 100-foot by the, what the crow flies, it, you know, it, it changes the scenario. You can have a facility go here and down around the corner, a long ways away is a church or a school, but as you cross over from that facility, just as the crow flies, you get 100 feet. And, and the facility can't, either facility can't see each other, can't smell each other, nothing. And yes, you can do the, the, the sign-off letter, but some churches, they, they don't have authorization within their church to write any kind of documentation like that. They, you know, they can say, no, we don't oppose, however, they won't write a letter. And that ties the, the Planning Department and the Commission if they won't write a letter. We need support facilities in our communities. And I, I would just like to caution us that we're thinking this came, this item came because there was problems with getting support facilities in our communities.
Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Well, I agree with Supervisor Bushnell that we absolutely need these facilities in our community. And I don't think, I'm hearing Director Ford say that 100-foot would actually restrict anything that's ever come before us. The one example that was provided was 550 feet. So clearly, the 100 feet would have worked, and we would not have needed the church to say yes or no at all. So am I correct, Director Ford, that you really have not seen applications where 100-foot would really prevent them from citing?
That, that is correct. That has been the experience. 100 feet would not conflict with anything that we've experienced today.
That's because we've had 600 feet.
Supervisor Wilson, we have a question.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm still pretty okay with this. I, you know, if we want to exempt churches and places of worship from the 100-foot, then I'm willing to talk about that. But other sensitive receptors, I'm not so encouraged to do that. I mean, if we feel like, if we feel like churches are just not autonomous enough to be able to make their own decisions about land use in their, where they are, I don't know, it's, it's not an experience I've had. But if that seems to be a common issue or a common problem, then maybe we exempt that particular use from this 100-foot setback.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Never mind. I'm fine.
Well, I was going to ask John about something like along the lines of an objection or a path to, I mean, if there happened to be the situation that Supervisor Bushnell, obviously, is a very real example, and I can understand very real concerns about it. Do we have a process where if there was a situation like that, could it come to the board instead? I mean, is that, I, I don't know. I'm just trying to see. No, Rex says no.
No, yes, there is. He just said that.
Okay. You know, thank you very much. I actually just want, I'm not versed in this as well as a lot of other people. I don't have a lot of this. So excuse me if I don't actually have the same knowledge.
Through, to the Chair, the answer is, is the ordinance does have that provision. There are circumstances where the property owner or the person who holds the title, and it may be a larger organization that is not local, does not want to grant a waiver. So then the provisions that exist in the ordinance aren't available. And, and so that was one of the driving reasons to pursue this amendment, recognizing that where you're going to experience most of these conflicts are in areas where there's commercial and industrially zoned property. That's largely in community plan areas. Those are areas with paved roads, with utilities, with access. That's where we want these facilities to locate. But if we have a ubiquitous 600-foot setback around them, they're not going to be able to locate in proximity to schools, churches, or anything else. And they are largely, and I, and I just, I don't want to be a broken record, but it's really important, they're indoor facilities. We're not talking about an outdoor grow. That's not what these include. I mean, the only type of cultivation you would see here would be a clone room. And then they would be selling clones. So there, there would be no flower being produced. So there would be no odor here. There could be processing. But again, processing's all done indoors. That's, that's not an outdoor activity. There could be distribution, again, indoors.
I just, I guess my question is, because I, I'm supportive of whatever helps move things along. You thought 100 feet would be fine, and I'm hearing from Supervisor Bushnell, it's not fine. So that's all I'm trying to figure out. If it's not fine, then, then we'll go back to the original. I mean, I'm trying to figure out what's reasonable. Supervisor, then Bushnell?
Oh, sorry. My kind of.
Yeah. I mean, just so we're clear, my proposal about exempting places of worship is somewhat sarcastic, I guess. You know, I just want to be clear. Like, I think we need more consistency in this. So what I'm hearing from Director Ford is that in the incidents where the church that was brought up that couldn't get their letter done, that the project proponent could come to the Board of Supervisors to get an override on that. Is that correct? Is that?
No.
Oh, the override is modifications of the ordinance. That's what we're doing.
Okay. But, okay, I, I guess I see what you're saying. So, but there's not, there's not another path where, where we could, we have to actually override the ordinance? It wouldn't be, it's like some sort of special condition as per the, for the board?
No, if, if the church leadership, the church organization, the parent church organization, were willing to sign off on the letter, it would be done. It'd be easy. That, that, that path exists in the ordinance. It's already written into the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, then I think, I mean, for me minimally, that 100 feet is important in this, in this case. But I, I see where there's that weird issue about whether they can give it or not give it and the permission. Yeah. I, I was hoping that there would be a path, an alternative path for us. And maybe that's for a future iteration of an ordinance.
I believe that's why the ordinance didn't have the setback in it when, when the Planning Department created it, is because it hindered, it's hindrance of this process, because there isn't another path. And so here we are changing this ordinance, trying to fix this, and we're once again going to put a setback on it, that we're going to have a problem in the future, the same thing. And, and, and we have the, the facilities that we are talking about, like Director Ford said, they go on paved roads. They go in, you know, areas that are where we want them. And we're going to hinder that process again.
Actually, I, I don't think, I don't think you're going to hinder, I think we're moving in the direction you're looking for. So, you know, we have a motion that said 100 feet. We can vote on that motion, or that person can pull it off the table, and we can have another motion. So, and I did not make the motion, so I'll ask the motion maker, which I think was Supervisor Madron?
I think 100 feet is a reasonable compromise. And as Director Ford said, it wouldn't affect a single project that's come before us over the last couple of years. It doesn't mean there wouldn't be a situation, Supervisor Bushnell, in the future where it is an issue. But the likelihood of that issue being with the church is small compared to a neighborhood, right? So, and if it's a neighborhood, the neighbors can give permission quite easily, right? They've got that autonomy. So I just don't.
Well, could we flip that then, a resident? Because nobody has applied, has been within 600 feet of a church. They measure, nobody puts that money or time or effort in to, to create a facility, to try to create a facility if they didn't have the setbacks. You don't have people applying because they didn't do it. What happened with, with this one instance, which there was many, is the, how it was measured by the way the crow flies, right? This facility was far away from this church as walking distance went. You don't have people applying within 600 feet because why would you do that? You're going to get shut down with no path forward. So there's no example, Director Ford doesn't have the examples because nobody's applied.
Well, that's a, that's a good point that you make, Supervisor Bushnell. I appreciate that. The one example that did come up was 550 feet as the crow flies from the church. So if, if we had this 100-foot rule right now, that wouldn't have been an issue at all. I don't know, it just seems like a reasonable compromise. It still provides neighborhoods with a setback that's more than the building code or more than the zoning code. It seems minimal. You know, we're opening up the extra 500 feet here. That's a long way towards what you're hoping for. I just, it seems like a reasonable compromise to me.
Supervisor Bone, your hand was up.
I. Yeah, the argument's been made. I just, I think Supervisor Bushnell made a great point. I mean, it's 600 feet. I mean, this is like, this is like the bus stops that haven't been used for 10 years, but they used to be, because there used to be a family with their 10 years ago, one house, and they, you know, I just, I think, we, we just, we just spent a whole bunch of time on trellis because the, the market is bad. One of the, the other problems is the market's bad because we're having to go to too many out-of-town processors. And when it gets down there, they're getting it rejected or come pick it up, and it becomes cost prohibitive. So give us 550 pound, 500, and they're, and they're, and they're having to sell it for those rates. And that way, you know, we, they control their market a little bit better if they can deal locally with people that they know. So I just, the, the more we can do locally is better. And I just, I think most of these facilities are packaging and distribution. And I, and I don't want these in residential neighborhoods as John, and then in these commercial areas, a lot of them are close to, to towns, but not right on top. And then we, we get that close to, close to work. Everybody can bicycle to the place to work. So we, we get them closer to the inner circle. So I don't know. I, I'll, we can go with 100 feet. I just end with the idea that it started out with the sensitive receptor signing off and saying if they don't have a problem with it, they can do, okay, I'm good with that. And now it's morphed into the whole neighborhood has to sign off. And I know, don't think they're all sensitive receptors within that 100 feet. So I'm just, I, I, I want to protect people's, you know, rights and everything else. I mean, the same, the same smell responses and everything else are going to, you know, still be in place. So I, this horse is almost dead.
Director Ford had his hand up, so I did want to go to him.
I, I don't want to continue to flog the horse, but just if it helps the board. Under 1.0, there were, these setbacks did not apply to these types of activities. But these activities required a conditional use permit. Those that had been approved with a conditional use permit, there have not been complaints about them. If that helps you.
How many are there, John? Do you know?
I would say in the neighborhood of 10.
And no complaints. Okay.
So, John, you're saying they went through the process. How do you see that applying here since we're talking about, you know, not, it sounded like we didn't have recourse if, if a situation came up. And I just, I'm, just want to make sure that we do what, I do believe Supervisor Bushnell's comment, I mean, I, I take it as heartfelt. I mean, she's had a really awful experience, and I just want to see how we can, you know, I don't know, move things along and protect. So.
I didn't have the experience, but someone in my district did, and it's painful.
That's what I meant. You're, you represent somebody. You've had to deal with it. I don't know. While we do have a motion for 100, and unless there's somebody else that wishes to have a converse, say anything else, we can vote on the 100. And then if that doesn't work, then we'll go back and try something else. Tracy?
Thank you. Yes. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm going to vote on it because the Planning Department has done a ton of work. But I, if we see this in front of us again, I'm going to say I told you so, both of you. Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
God, I love four ones. I'll just say yes.
Asses by Sierra. Thank you.
See if we can save the horse.
Thank you.
All right. If that is, we have a vote, we have that, so we're done. So I'm closing this public hearing. And I actually think we're ready to close the meeting as well, unless somebody has any information that I don't have. All right. Seeing nobody, we are officially adjourned. Thanks.